Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, today, we have a proclamation of Community Media Day. I'll just read this. Whereas the open sharing of ideas and information helps to build a common understanding and encourage civic engagement; and whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community; and whereas Falmouth Community Television, FCTV, provides a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and create new stories together; and whereas FCTV provides information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media; and whereas FCTV provides its members with the skills necessary for the creation, sharing, and consumption of knowledge and ideas through media; and whereas FCTV is an essential resource for participating in local democratic policy and processes ensuring transparency in government through live uninterrupted coverage of municipal meetings; and whereas FCTV provides timely, critical, local information to promote public health and safety during the current pandemic and other emergencies; and whereas FCTV connects community organizations, schools, and local governments to their constituents; and whereas the community benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for local media content and vital information created by and for the community. Now therefore be it resolved that October 20th, 2021, is here by proclaimed as Community Media Day within Falmouth, and all people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of media training, local programming available on FCTV Channels 13, 14, and 15, and online distribution platforms. And be it further resolved that Falmouth Community Television plays a vital role in the building of our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives.
Second.
All those in favor of this proclamation?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. And thanks to FCTV, and thanks to Deb Rogers for her participating in the renegotiation with Comcast, and I understand one of our local channels will be upgraded to HD according to the new agreement. Is that the 15?
That's our understanding as well. I don't have the details on exactly which channel, but that'll be forthcoming.
And I guess whichever one it is, we can choose to use it if we so desire, I suppose?
Yep.
Okay, great.
I'll just stop him up.
I tried to get him down. So next, we have recognition. Does anybody have any particular recognition that they'd like to proclaim today? I don't have anything really prepared for recognition for today. I'd like to recognize that we did have the celebration of the Falmouth Police 100-year anniversary on Saturday. It was well-attended, and it was great to see all the kids come out and get to see the helicopter land and all the equipment that they have, including the sheriff's boats and the dogs that are in the sheriff's department and other departments. It was pretty fun, and the food was good, too.
I thought it was great to see all of the families that attended. It was really pretty awesome.
Good opportunity to meet the police in an informal setting and to know them a little better.
Attendance wasn't as great as it was a couple of years ago before the pandemic. I feel like people are still shying away from public events, but it was still really nicely attended, so a great event.
I think it's also smack dab in the middle of the rec soccer sports.
Yes.
Yeah, on Saturday, so it's tough for...I know, we couldn't go because it was right in the middle of when soccer happened.
And wasn't there a dunk tank at one point?
Yes.
Where's the dunk tank?
Yes. Josh Oliver was one of the folks who volunteered to be dunked, so he was a very good sport about it, so maybe we need to bring the dunk tank back.
I think that'll bring him on.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any announcements from the board or staff?
Sure.
Okay. Today, we are going to welcome our new Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer, Jacqueline Hartman. Welcome, Jacqueline. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about what brings you to Falmouth? If you'd like to take your mask off to speak, that's up to you.
Okay, I'll leave it on. I am so excited to be a part of the Falmouth community. I was here last year for about a month and really fell in love with the place. It was so welcoming, and so I look forward to all of the things that we can do together. This has been my first day on the job, and everyone has been super-friendly and welcoming, and so I know that there are a lot of allies in the room, and so I'm excited to see what we can get started together.
Just want to caution you that this job has been under so much scrutiny by so many people, and there's so much high expectation, so I don't know if it's really practical that one person is going to be able to accomplish...
There's no way to welcome her.
She's going to withdraw.
Just got to be fair and let you know.
Yeah, I think that that's really important because we should have transparency and we should have, you know, goals that we are trying to reach, and so I ask for patience because I want to do this, and I know that many others want to do it, too. And I really hope that we can build really strong relationships and build more trust in one another.
Good, and I definitely want to give you plenty of time to get settled in.
Thank you.
But as soon as you do, I want you to take a look at us and tell us what we can do better as well. I know there's a role for us, not clear exactly what it is.
I'm happy to hear that everyone's open to everything, so thank you, guys.
And I just wanted to say, sort of as a dovetail to that, that because that position is split between sort of Town Hall and the school department, however we can support the work that you're doing, you know, we hope that, you know, that we really want to hear that constructive criticism, really have that outside look, you know, you're coming from another community, so it's really helpful, because sometimes we get just used to what we're doing every day. So please, you know, I know that a lot of this was emphasized sort of towards the school in a big way, and that is certainly a huge component of it, but there's that other piece of it which really is about how we can be better about building inclusivity and making sure we're having a sharp eye to the work that we do. So please, don't be a stranger to, you know, dropping by and letting us know individually or collectively how we can assist you and your work.
Yeah, in other words, share what you see through your lens with us, because we don't necessarily see.
We take criticism well.
And often, so don't feel that you're standing alone.
And I've had sort of a foot in both worlds, the municipal side and the school side, so if there are any pieces that I can help you with, please reach out. I'd be more than happy to support you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Welcome, Jackie.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I actually did have one announcement.
Oh, good.
Just an event announcement. The Portuguese-American Association is having on the...let me make sure I get the date. Not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, they're having the Matança, which is the...it's a Portuguese, like a harvest festival, dinner, and so it will be at...I'll give you the exact...you can buy your tickets, you can reach out to me if you want to get a ticket or go to their Facebook page, and it is a really wonderful, family-friendly event. It's on the 16th, Saturday of the 16th, and it's an evening event, really good food, fun space, there's some outdoor space, so if people are more comfortable, but the indoor space is also very large, so we hope that you join us. It's one of the more traditional events that we have, so we hope people will join us.
It's at the Navigator Club?
It's at the Navigator, yep.
Just had a great breakfast there Sunday.
Yes.
Very nice. Okay, number seven, unfortunately, the building commissioner was...we were hoping to hire, was not able to be with us and may not be able to follow through with his commitment to work in Falmouth.
Correct.
So, number eight, we have public comment. Is there anyone who wished to make a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda tonight? And welcome, come on up, please, to the microphone.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kristen Marshall. I'm the Executive Director of E4All Cape Cod. It stands for Entrepreneurship for All Cape Cod. We're a nonprofit, and we help locals launch businesses. So every year, we launch 30 new businesses on Cape. A couple of the folks who have come through in Falmouth, we have Atlantic Soap Company. She makes handmade soaps from seawater. We have Glovan Palmer, who just launched Order We Go, which is kind of like a local DoorDash or a local Uber Eats, so look up Glovan, Order We Go, you can find your local food and your local restaurants. But the reason I'm here tonight is, one, just to kind of promote E4All and let folks know that if you have a business idea or a nonprofit that offers a free accelerator to help you move that idea from idea to real business, and it really is my job is to fundraise, and so it's completely free to the entrepreneurs. It's an inclusive accelerator where the folks who go through it are 75% women, 25% persons of color, 25% immigrants. But we have an event coming up, and it was slated to be in Falmouth. We're going to have it at the Arts Center, but we've since moved it to Zoom, but we have quarterly pitch contests, kind of like the show Shark Tank, and so we have them coming up. It's called the Healthy Communities Pitch Contest, and it is generously sponsored by the Falmouth Road Race, and so we're looking for folks with business ideas within the theme of healthy communities. And so, you know, what it might be, maybe it's a kelp farmer, maybe it's a vegan restaurant, maybe it's a yoga studio, but we want folks to apply to pitch. If they get selected, they get two and a half minutes on stage, and if they win, they get some money to move their business forward. So we have a first place at $1,000, second place $750, third place $500, and a fan favorite of $500. So this is all on Zoom. The event is on November 3rd, and the deadline to apply to pitch your business idea is October 22nd. And if folks are interested in more information or the application, they can head over to our website. It's eforall.org, so E-F-O-R-A-L-L dot org, and just head to the Cape Cod page. We would love to see some applications, especially from Falmouth, since that was where we were hoping to be originally, so thank you so much.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Any other public comments evening?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. My name is Eleanor Ling, and I'm a member of the Falmouth Energy Committee and also a member of the Falmouth Climate Action Network. What I'm going to say probably is redundant for some of you, so this is just a friendly reminder that the Woodwell Climate Resource Center has a webinar series on climate emergency. Is the webinar series is titled Beyond 1.5, and the second webinar is titled Tipping Points: Is There a Point of No Return? This webinar is going to be on this coming Wednesday, October 6th, at 3:00 PM. And this cutting-edge discussion asks how close we are to climate tipping points and what it would take to turn it around. It's going to be a very interesting discussion, and the online registration is still available. I just checked at 6:00 PM tonight, and because the first one last week was totally sold out. So if you're interested, and I hope you are, and available, and you can register on the Woodwell Center and website, you can go to woodwellclimate.org/events/. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I did try to log in on the last one, and it was too late.
Yeah, it's all sold out.
Have they expanded their capacity?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't know, but as I checked at about 6:00 PM.
Okay.
It's still available.
All right, thank you. Okay, so administrative orders, ask...oh, sorry.
I have a letter to read.
Oh, excuse me, public comment.
For public comment, thank you. This is a letter I received on September 27th. Dear Ms. Taylor, we are writing to express our support for the proposed new renovated police station. My wife and I have been residents of Falmouth for 27 years and appreciate Chief Edward Dunn and his officers and staff for all their great work keeping us safe and helping residents in so many various ways. However, the town has grown, as has the need for a larger, modernized area in which to conduct police business. We fully support proposed changes to the police station, modernizing it, and creating better working conditions for the members of our wonderful police department. Please share our comments with the rest of the board and the public. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter, and this came from Stephen Karas and Susan Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we'll do the administrative orders. Acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, vote to amend application for $260,000 from Falmouth Housing Trust for three units of affordable, single-family houses at 55 Lewis Neck Road. And I got a note from Planning Board Chair Charlotte Harris that she'd like to speak to this article before we get too far into it, if that's all right?
Yes. Good evening, I'm Charlotte Harris, Chair right now of the Planning Board, and I'd like to speak on this article, although it's possible the horse has left the barn, but what I would like to say about it is, you know, this was of some concern to the Planning Board because of the road itself. The road is...was, at the time that we were considering it, in very different conditions, so they've improved the road, but there are things left to be done. So I'm here to ask you to please defer your decision until the issues that are unresolved can be attended to, and in our view, there are two of them. One deals with the release of the covenant. The covenant was about whether or not it was a buildable lot, and after some discussion, part of which, actually, we believe the board was misled on several points, but we did decide that it could go forward for one house. This covenant has not been released, so that issue needs to be addressed. The other issue that's sort of outstanding, definitely, when the road was improved to make it an 18-foot paved road at the expense of the people on the road, so they've now put a lot of money into this, part of it is on private property, and the people who live on the road parallel to Lewis Road didn't give permission for their road to be...for their land to be paved over, so that needs to be resolved. So we ask that you defer your decision on putting public money into this project until those two issues are solved.
Well, Mr. Suso, have you have any knowledge as to those two items and their resolution?
Well, we have some information on it. Peter, can you come up for making a few comments?
Yes, so I can say that Town Council has looked at all of these issues with respect and, you know, they're not black and white issues, unfortunately, but the...taking them one at a time, with respect to the covenant, the issue there is that the covenant was put in place when there was an unpaved road, and there was concern about access, and the covenant required in order to meet the requirements of the covenant, the covenant said that the road had to be paved to a width of 18 feet with drainage structure. That has now been done. So there is a dispute among members of the Planning Board about whether that covenant prevents construction of more than one unit of house. The argument that you will hear from the applicant is that it's not the Planning Board's purview to decide how many units can be constructed under a 40B, because that's the very nature of a 40B, is it does not comply with the town's traditional zoning. So it is the guidance that we got from Frank Duffy, Town Council, was that there would be very little basis for the town to challenge the covenant because the whole reason for its placement was to address access issues which have now been addressed. So there are...I realize there are a couple of issues that get sort of mixed in there together, so certainly if you have any questions...
We'll finish talking about this one first, just making...
So the question I would have is, if there are any disputes about the project that still have to work their way through, and say, in some strange, you know, turn of events, the project can't go forward, the money is not expended, correct?
Right, and the question's going to be, you know, how is that decided? It will...it would take someone with legal standing to file a suit to prevent this from moving forward. The town doesn't have, in Frank Duffy's view, the town doesn't have standing or a basis to initiate...
Would have to be in a butter, in all likelihood.
Right, and it is not at all...from my...are we...do we want to move on to the next issue?
Any other questions on the covenant?
Nope.
Okay, yes, please.
So the Town Planner and Town Council did take a look at the issues of ownership, and there are some ambiguities there, but the...it is...it's not clear that there is anyone with legal standing that has the ability to...or that has a real basis to contest the decision. There...you'll have to forgive me, because I don't have all of the details. It's a fairly involved matter of legal interpretation in terms of the underlying ownership of the property and whether or not the individual who paved the road had the right to pave the road. You know, I think there's a pretty good case to be made that, in fact, those rights are in place, and we did get opinions from the applicant, Falmouth Housing Trust. The attorney, Laura Mornihan, brought forward some...an opinion that I think ultimately Town Council was satisfied that they did, in fact, have the right to pave the road.
But no one's brought a suit. Right now, as we sit here right now, there isn't...
Absolutely, no one has brought a suit, and certainly, you know, if we want to get something, you know, if you want to hear directly from Frank Duffy before the funds are released, you know, we can certainly do that.
And beyond the "no one's brought a suit," has anyone filed any complaint that might be precluding a suit? Is there any indication that there's any problem from a neighbor?
You know what, I haven't...I did not participate in the Zoning Board of Appeals 40B hearings, so I don't want to say whether or not someone raised a concern.
Yes, Ms. Bissonette?
Karen Bissonette, Falmouth Housing Trust. No, no one has filed anything. We're in an appeal period right now, and they have a few more days to be able to do that. I don't anticipate that's going to happen. We could be here all night if you want me to go into all those details, and I do have all the details, so I'll...I will not do that to all of you, but if you have any questions about the covenant, which Mr. Johnson Staub sort of didn't represent because it wasn't up to us to pave the road, but anyway, if you have any questions, I'm very well-versed on the project, so you could ask me.
The only question I had about the paving was that it was my understanding that there was going to be some solicitation of support from the neighbors whose property had been maybe encroached upon?
Well, Mr. Fender, Falmouth Housing Trust had...did not have to do anything with the road. The covenant said, and all due respect to Mr. Johnson Staub, the covenant read that we had to fill the potholes in front of our property and brush back 18 feet wide and 13 feet high. Those were the two conditions of the covenant, had nothing to do with the paving of the road. That was Mr. Fender's condition, not ours. So we had nothing to do with the paving of the road, other than we contributed to the cost of paving of the road, as did the other members of the road.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could? Yes. What Karen just said is correct. I apologize, I was mixing up two things. One is what the covenant said, and the other is what the board placed as a condition on funding, which was, in light of the concerns that the Planning Board had raised, the board, when it voted the original application for this project, voted the condition that the road had to be paved to a width of 18 feet and drainage installed, and that has been done by Mr. Fender.
And that was the condition of this board?
That was the condition of this board for funding.
Right.
Correct.
That's not true. That's not true. There was no condition, because I did not have you vote on it on June 7th or June 21st. I took it off the agenda. As you remember, this is the first time that they have voted on this $260,000 for three houses, so...
I think it was in the original vote for the original application.
It was not, because I pulled it so you didn't have an opportunity to vote on it.
That was for the amendment, Karen. You pulled the vote on the amendment, not the original application.
Okay, I would disagree with that, and so I'm just saying...
But anyway, the impetus for the paving was for the project that abuts your property.
That's correct, not for our project. That's correct.
Okay, so any more questions or comments from the board?
I guess just one comment. I mean, whenever we have a 40B project, you know, all local restrictions are pretty much moot, and it's only the state restrictions that apply, as I recall. Is that too much of a generalization?
Well, it's whatever the ZBA puts on as conditions.
Well, there are conditions for a particular project, right? But they can't impose conditions that are not in state law.
Probably, but sometimes there's site-specific conditions, like, for instance, the project on East Main Street that was five stories tall with five foot setbacks. They imposed several conditions that were specific to the site and the project. It can be.
Well, I'm going to...
If I may?
Yes.
So it's a negotiation, and the standard is that if the ZBA imposes conditions that render the project not economic, then they will not be upheld by the state housing render the project not economic, then they will not be upheld by the State Housing Appeals Commission. So it's not, it's not as simple as all local requirements go away. There's a review process, conditions are placed, sometimes they're accepted by the applicant, sometimes they're contested, and then again, so the ZBA can impose what conditions it feels are reasonable, but those are subject to appeal to the State Housing Appeals Commission, and if they render the project not economic, they will be overruled.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, this project has been going on for over two years, and I would, I do have some sympathy for the applicant as far as the time schedule. Yes, please, go ahead. All right, thank you.
I spoke with Frank Duffy today because I wanted to get my docs in order before I came here to keep, I realize this has been pending a long time, and we all want affordable housing, but we also don't want the planning board's interest to be completely overlooked. And in speaking with Frank, maybe there's not an issue with the paving. He said it's, as you did, Mr. Johnson Staub, that it's a gray area, but what he felt might not be a gray area is the issue of the covenant. It never would have gotten to the ZBA for a decision about a 40B unless it were a buildable lot. So the, taking the covenant off to say whether or not it's a buildable lot, the timing of that would actually matter. It would matter. So getting it straightened before it goes as a buildable lot for a determination of whether or not it can now be a 40B-able lot matters. So straightening out the covenant matter, matters. And Frank said, yeah, it's ambiguous, but he thought there was an issue with it. So I feel comfortable reporting that to you, and it would be good to have Frank here tonight to repeat that.
Chairman, town council should be with us about 8 o'clock. If the, with the board's determination, you want to hold on this briefly and have Frank on it.
Well, we could do that, or we could just see, take a sense of the board if you want to condition it on, you know, if we vote to fund the project and Attorney Duffy determines that it legally is a problem, then the funding won't be applied anyway.
Well, I would prefer that we wait for Attorney Duffy's presence.
Would you mind if we wait till Attorney Duffy comes in, and we'll put this on hold for half an hour?
I rushed home from Indiana.
I'm.
Can I say one more thing?
So the zoning board, when they approved this project, they believed that the covenant was satisfied when the potholes were filled and when it was brushed back 18 feet wide and 13 feet high. Those were the two conditions of the covenant, and they have been satisfied. And we had, we spent a lot of money on an opinion by Attorney Freeman, who is, I think you all would agree, if you know him, is a 40B expert, and all of that was taken into account by the zoning board. And also, we got site approval by Mass Housing. So this is not a fly-by-night decision. It has been ad nauseam, gone over and over and over, and so, and as far as the, being legally to pave the road, if you look at the titles of those people whose property does go onto that road, it says right in their title, and I read it over and over again, that the people of the cart path, which is Lewis Neck Road, have the right to go over the road. And Massachusetts law says if you have a right to go over the road, you have a right to improve the road, and Mr. Johnson Staub is shaking his head because he knows that that is the law. And so that shouldn't even be a question. So that also, we had an attorney do, but all you need to do, it's very simple, is just read the titles of the people who own that property, so.
Okay.
We have submitted that to the town and to everyone else. But if you need me to stay, then I will stay.
Sorry, thank you.
Do we need a motion to defer our decision until Attorney Duffy comes?
Can we just table it, or?
Yes.
I think we just table it, because it's not a public hearing. I think we just table it for.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling until Attorney Duffy gets here? Thank you. Okay, next is vote to approve expenditure from the library department donation account in the amount of approximately $2,000 for the replacement of book trucks.
Move approval.
Saw that in the packet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that donation. And next is authorize a letter of support for HOE grant request to the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the Seawater Project. And we have some information in our packet regarding language in this proposed legislation.
And Mr. Chairman, we also have, from HOE, we have a couple of our colleagues, Emily Lockhart, who's a deputy counsel with the HOE, and Rob Munier, vice president with HOE.
If you'd like to speak, please come on up.
We're here to maybe comment and answer questions.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Emily Lockhart, and over there is Rob Munier. I think you know us both a little bit. And we are working with the Cape Cod Commission, with the Southeast Regional Economic Development Plan, with Mass Maritime, with Bristol Community College, on a economic development proposal that is part of the EDA Build Back Better Grant. It's a big competitive opportunity that folks from all over the country are working on, developing clusters for different economic impacts, and ours is, of course, around the blue economy, maritime economy. And as part of that, we are respectfully requesting a letter of support from the town to continue this proposal.
Thank you. You know, when I first read this, I was very concerned about the language about using COVID recovery funds to promote offshore wind, because that's a private developer, and I'm a little troubled that legislature is considering using COVID recovery funds to facilitate construction, manufacturing, or the operation and maintenance of offshore wind. Now, this request from this group is only to add the specific language, or related blue tech marine economy, and then later adding the language, including Falmouth as one of these designated port areas, including New Bedford, Salem, Somerset, and now possibly Falmouth, and additional port areas with the potential to facilitate economic development activity for the offshore wind industry, or related, in new language, or related blue tech marine economy. I'd be much happier if it didn't even say offshore wind, and it was only about the blue economy, but I guess we don't really have much to say about that.
Well, that language is in what has come from the governor's office, so we would be with the board's concurrence, we would be working with HOE to have this language expanded along these same lines to be more beneficial directly to the town of Falmouth, the blue economy, and our colleagues at HOE and others.
Well, I'm certainly in favor personally of the amendments, but I am troubled by the main part of it.
By the language from the governor, from the actual act?
Yeah, to use ARPA funds to facilitate construction of offshore wind. It's a private developer.
I mean, what I can, you know, it's what the governor's language put in, and so what we're, what we're speaking with town manager Suso about is the idea of broadening that to include the blue tech economy and eligibility for the town of Falmouth for that as well. And so if it's something that the select board, you know, is amenable to, it's something that Woods Hole Oceanographic is also happy to try and help support. So I appreciate where you're coming from.
Yeah, well.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, please.
There's the two agenda items. The first one is actually about a proposal to go the Economic Development Administration Government.
Oh, right, excuse me.
That's the Build Back Better piece. The second item is the one that you're discussing with respect to the language for the, so there's actually two agenda items. They're both about ultimately providing funding for waterfront work.
Right.
But I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that those are two different things.
The first one wasn't controversial, so I jumped over it, sorry.
So can I motion to approve the authorization of the letter of support?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That one's an easy one.
Thank you.
The second one, I mean, it's also easy, but not a difficult decision for me to add this language. The problem I have is, I feel like I want to advocate against this whole article, which is unfortunate if you're trying to add language to get support. I don't know.
Is it adding to renewable energy?
Well, I imagine it's offshore wind, but, you know, the, I'm a little concerned about the initial studies that we're seeing, how we've been told that there's only 400 right whales that are left in this planet, and 352 have been identified on that parcel that they want to use to build these wind turbines. And I'm a little concerned about the impacts of the infrasound on the whales. I don't even know if that's really been figured out. I don't know. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
I think you had your hand up first.
Well, sorry, my hand was not up, but I was going to say, I know, my husband works for Noah, and he was recently on a project looking at right whales and fishing entanglement specifically, but I know Noah's doing a lot of work on that, so we could, just throwing it out there, if we wanted, you know, a small report from certain offices at Noah, just to.
I would be interested in that, because we're going to have Mayflower Wind coming back to us to try to firm up some more agreements, and we have to really consider whether we're, you know, really behind that project or. Yes, Megan?
So I guess when I read this, I mean, this is expansive language that the governor has created that we're adding to, but it would be my sense that we're putting in an application to try and get funds for then what we would want to advocate for projects.
Right.
So we wouldn't necessarily be saying we want money for offshore wind. We would be advocating for the blue tech marine economy. Is, am I getting that right? In other words, we would control what some of the expenditure of these funds, if we were to receive them, would be designated to.
That's exactly right.
Right? Okay. That's how I, I know what you're saying, I think.
I understand what you're saying too, but I read it the same way.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with, I agree with adding the language for now, and then we'll take up the larger debate at another time, I guess, if others agree.
Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Ah, I know.
Like, in other words, we're not going to ask for the funds for ourselves for the offshore wind. We would be asking for whatever projects we might be doing in Woods Hole. I mean, that's, you know, we're just taking this big, broad language that the governor has had, we're adding to it, but we are, we will direct what it is we're asking for.
Certainly.
Right.
This only gives us a chance to be involved in it. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve this language?
I'd move to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rob, Emily.
All right, next we have.
We can go to a public hearing?
Authorized for town manager to pursue language in the state's ARPA, oh, that was the same one, okay. 7:30, public hearing, we have a public hearing, vote intent to lay out as a townway and assess betterments for Winthrop Drive on the east side. We've allowed 15 minutes for this.
This is continued from our last meeting because of the issue with the notice to a butters.
Correct.
Yeah, and we went to Zoom. Welcome, Mr. McGlocklin.
James McGlocklin, town engineer. And the hearing this evening, as you mentioned, is to vote intent to lay out Winthrop Drive East.
Oh, should I read the public notice first, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. In accordance with Section 22 of Chapter 82 and Chapter 80 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 27, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, to consider the layout of Winthrop Drive East Side, 726 feet, and to vote as a townway and to move any betterment assessments. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed layout and taking of this road, or wishing to be heard on betterments to property owners receiving benefit of the improvements to the roadway described, should appear at the time and place designated. Preliminary plans of the proposed layout of the above-named road and betterment estimates will be available for public viewing in the office of the town clerk, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., per order of the Select Board. The publication date was Friday, September 10, 2021, in the Falmouth Enterprise. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Winthrop Drive East is in Seacoast Shores, and it's located in this area here. It runs from Seacoast Shores Boulevard down to Edgewater Drive East. It's about 726 or 750 feet is what we're calling, just for estimating purposes. We've done a cost estimate, and the big ticket items are with regard to site prep. We've got $30,000 pavement, which includes gravel at $85,000, and utilities at nearly $100,000. The total estimated cost of improvements is $240,000, and we mic that up 10% for a contingency, and end up with a final estimate of $264,000 and $600. The, which ends up with a total cost to a butter of $15,564. Now, we, a year and a half or so ago, did Winthrop Drive West, we had a similar cost estimate, and this is the betterment that we're planning on for this project, $15,565. On Winthrop Drive West, we had a estimated betterment of $14,072, and when we actually got the work done, it was significantly less, because what we do, when we do these estimates, is consider the worst-case scenario and using state bid, bid unit prices to come up with an estimate. So generally, it's a lot higher, and in the case of Winthrop West, like I said, we had an estimate of $14,000, a little over that per butter, and when it was finally finished, we were down to about $5,500. So it's a considerable savings, and while we can't promise that that will be the case in this project, that would be our hope and our expectation that we'll be able to bring it in at a much lower number than what the estimate is.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board regarding this project? Is there a motion to approve?
I'd take a public comment.
Any public comment? Sorry.
Exhale, is this the?
Could you please come up and identify yourself?
We have to ask your question at the microphone.
Folks at home, I'd have to hear you too.
Hi, Nancy McDonald, 48, Winthrop. In terms of the process, is this the first selectman's vote, and then it goes to the planning board, or is this the final vote?
This is our vote to send it to town meeting, I believe, and then once it's approved at town meeting, does it come back to us?
Then it comes back to you one last time.
Right.
Well, I'm concerned, because last time, one of the steps was missed, and so we missed quite a bit of time in this. So I guess my question to you is, how are we going to make sure that the process doesn't get interrupted in the middle again, and then it gets followed through with, and that we actually get to town meeting and have a happy ending?
Well, you can call the town manager every day and check up on him.
This is the last step before town meeting.
Yeah. And it's included, it's already included in.
It's one of the articles.
It's one of the articles in this town meeting warrant.
This is our final vote. We don't have to be worried after this, besides.
Unless town meeting says.
Unless town meeting says, obviously, yeah.
They hold the purse strings, so for some reason.
Right, no, I'm talking about in terms of this mechanism. Thank you.
It's one of our draft articles for the warrant.
We'll be approving it or discussing it for approval tonight.
All right, thanks.
So now I'm going to consider closing the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion to approve this project?
No, I move that we approve. What's it called? The betterment of Winthrop Drive?
Vote to intent.
Taking.
To lay out.
Taking.
And assess betterments.
Right. Do we have an official written motion?
Yeah, it's actually, it's as listed on your public hearing. Vote intent to lay out as a townway and assess betterments for Winthrop Drive.
Is that too much?
Second.
East side.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you had to come back again. Next we have.
Could we just, before we do that, could we maybe right after town meeting, I know we have a lot on the plate before town meeting, could we get an update on the list? Because people are always asking us about that. Could we get an update on where the list is for road takings? Because folks always ask us.
Certainly.
So just get a sense, maybe we can have a presentation of just kind of the ones you have on the list. And I know it's not, I know sometimes things happen and they can move around, but I often get emails from folks who say, I know our road is on the list, I don't know where in the queue we are.
Sure, we can.
An update.
At town meeting, we'll schedule a time and come in and go through the list. It's well over 40 streets and/or subdivisions, some have multiple streets in them, but.
Just so people can visualize it and just understand, maybe you can just take a brief little bit to talk about the process so that people who are waiting understand it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Appreciate it, sorry.
Okay, discussion on COVID issues. We're going to probably wait a little longer for Mr. McGann to be available.
Yeah, he has a board of health meeting this evening in Long Hall School, so he'll be with us as soon as that's concluded.
Yeah, okay, and so let's, let's do the school committee next, because they're sitting here waiting, and we can talk about the. sitting here waiting, and we can talk about the demolishing the buildings afterwards.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Would you like to be the honorary?
Sure.
Natalie, why don't you introduce yourself?
I shall, I just wanna make sure we get set up here first. Perfect. Okay, so good evening, my name is Natalie Cantolopoulos, and I'm the chair of the school committee, and I'm joined by superintendent, Dr. Lori Dorr.
And this is the most nerve-wracking thing that any one ever has to do.
Exactly, because it's here, and it's also here, so this is interesting.
And I have to apologize, I just now noticed we have people from Farming Falmouth that's sitting there waiting as well, I'm sorry, I did that to you.
Do you want us to, it's still, there's still, we'll still probably be early.
F-five.
Okay. So while she's working on that, so first and foremost, thank you so much for, um, inviting us to present to you this evening. Um, I would like to begin with a brief highlight of the school committee's goals for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, which is coming right up there. Great, so the school committee met in August, uh, for our annual retreat, and during this meeting, three overarching goals were established for the committee. These goals focus on communication, equity and inclusion, and the safe opening of schools. So our first goal is communication. Through this goal, members of the school committee will engage in two-way communication with stakeholders to better deliver information, as well as to actively listen and solicit feedback. Communication will be approached with an equity focus to ensure all voices have, have the opportunity to be heard. Strategies for accomplishing this goal include to identify audiences with whom we would like to improve communication, so that's staff, public, family, uh, families, unions, students, all stakeholders, and develop a communication strategy to reach each identified group. We also want to outline hurdles to equitable two-way communication in order to address these issues. We will actively solicit feedback from stakeholders, we will survey students, staff, and families about topics as well as a means for communication, and we will also utilize our English learning department team for ideas to connect with our ELL families. Our second goal, um, is a continuation of a goal that was established last year, and that goal is that the Falmouth School Committee will solidify its efforts to build a foundation of knowledge and understanding around equity, access, inclusion, diversity, and systemic racism. Key actions of this goal include creating a definition of terms that will serve as a baseline for the whole school, school committee. We will attend appropriate training sessions as a school committee and summarize the lessons learned for the public. We will apply this new knowledge into the decisions made by the school committee and the district, whether that's policy review, budgeting, communication, discipline, and human resources. We will work to ensure that policies and procedures, or lack thereof, do not give an unfair advantage or disadvantage to any individual or group. We will survey students about their experiences around equity, inclusion, diversity, and racism, and we'll have a regular consultation with the new DEI officer, so happy she's here, and also create action steps to ensure that the land acknowledgement that was recently drafted, um, is a living document, and I'll speak to that further. Our third goal, and probably the most important goal for superintendent, um, is that the school committee will support the superintendent's effort to keep the schools safe and open, and through this goal, the school committee will support Falmouth Public Schools' communication around COVID-nineteen with openness and transparency, including presentations and information sharing from community experts. Additionally, the school committee will support the superintendent's implementation of ESER funding and plans to support learning gaps due to COVID-nineteen. Um, and lastly, relate to our goals, to ensure accountability, uh, each school has a school committee lead person who will offer periodic reports to the committee, which will further serve as benchmarks for assessing progress toward each goal. And now Lori for DEI.
So we're gonna, uh, the, I'm sorry. The diversity, equity, uh, and inclusion goal, um, for the district, uh, includes professional development this year for all staff. The cultural proficiency with Dr. Kalise Warnham, uh, as you know, we had a, a joint, um, professional development last year. Uh, she actually completed two of professional development series, uh, last year with the higher staff, and she'll, uh, work with our staff, um, two additional times this year. So it's a, it's a continuum of, um, around cultural proficiency. Uh, in addition, um, this Friday, we have a diversity, equity, inclusion in action with Dr. Adolf Brown. Uh, we first heard, uh, superintendents first heard, uh, Dr. Brown, uh, at the superintendent's, um, summer conference. Um, he was, um, we look forward to having him back, um, several of the districts in the area has had him. We were supposed to have him that following year, COVID happened, we couldn't have gathered that many people, um, so we actually had to delay it twice, but we're gonna be able to have him, uh, back this, this, uh, Friday. And then, uh, restorative practices, uh, is also a goal that, um, Natalie had mentioned, uh, and for the district, and so Dr. Curtis Bates, um, will be, uh, working with our entire, uh, staff with an ongoing series, uh, around restorative practices. Restorative practices is just a more proactive way, uh, around, uh, discipline, um, that really kind of moves it away from discipline, uh, but really tries to repair the damage, uh, between parties, and looks at other type of, uh, ways for someone to kind of, um, show that they're understanding of what, what, um, one might have done, and be able to take those steps, um, uh, to not only repair things with, if anyone was harmed, but for themselves, uh, and the schools. So, um, we're looking forward to beginning that professional development for the entire staff this year. And as, uh, Natalie just mentioned, the DEI officer, she began today, um, Jacqueline Hartman, uh, we're very excited to have her on board, uh, so as, as, uh, it'll be a, a great venture between the, um, town and the school department. So this year, um, our, uh, message, uh, at convocation that started, and will be a continued message all year, um, was, uh, around being together, and so, um, and I'd like to, um, thank, uh, Angelae Scott Price one more time, she actually helped deliver the keynote address, um, and it, I, I, it just, it was a very positive message, and I think that it was, um, kind of, uh, well, um, well-accepted, and I think really, we've had a great start to the school year, and I think people are really feeling positive, um, this year, but, um, just taking, you know, together, and we really kind of worked through, you know, what unity and collaboration, um, you know, that teamwork, that connections, those relationships are, it's just so important, um, in, uh, our work, so, um, thank you again.
I got to watch that, I thought, was pretty inspired myself, it was very well done.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Great, so the next slide speaks to our, um, partnership with the Wampanoag Nation. To recap, in May, school committee members Andrea Thorell, Terry Maderas, and I had the opportunity to collaborate with, uh, members of the Wampanoag Nation, including, uh, Lynn Decooms, Kitty Hendricks, Natana Greendeer, and native educator Jerry Lassos to craft, thank you, yes, to craft a land acknowledgement, um, which will serve as a foundation for learning for the Falmouth Public Schools. And I'll take a very brief minute to read it out loud for anyone who can't see it. Um, Falmouth School Committee acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Suckanessit, Wacoit, Sippawisset, Taticet, and Chapacoit, as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment with the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation. And again, we are committed to making sure this is a living document and are in the process of defining its usage within the district.
So, um, uh, thank you to the town, um, so Indigenous Peoples' Day is, um, celebrated next week, and when we reached out to the tribe of how we can celebrate together, they suggested to have the, uh, Wampanoag, um, Nation dancers and singers and, uh, do some history with each one of our schools, so they've fully committed to come to each one of our schools, um, present that, um, they'll do two performances at our upper-three grades, so quite a few performances, but, um, just sharing the history, um, time for question and answers, and then a performance for our students. Um, and then, after that, um, to continue on, how can we, um, just make this kind of a, a living thing for our students, what are the type of things that, uh, will continue? We're working at the upper grades to actually have, um, the history embedded in our curriculum, and we're looking at across all grades of just, you know, um, writing competitions, art competitions, just to start kicking it off until we can literally get things embedded at all, all grade levels. The, um, next, um, community connection that we have, uh, is with the Cape Cod, uh, Cape Verdean Museum and Cultural Center, and we have been, uh, talking and working about how we can bring that to life for our students as well, and so this year, it'll begin with a, um, a field trip from all of our elementary students to visit, um, the museum, which is absolutely wonderful, and be able to, uh, for the students to start hearing, um, about, and just having that knowledge, um, uh, of, uh, um, just this rich culture that we have in Falmouth, and then, uh, beginning to see how we can just keep that growing within the curriculum as well, so, uh, it's a beginning, but we're really excited about both of those new partnerships for us this year. So, just shifting gears now a little bit, um, just looking at the enrollment, our total enrollment, um, for, uh, this year is three thousand and forty-nine. Uh, I put up the twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, so you can see that, uh, it, um, even though we're up a little bit from twenty-twenty, we're certainly still in that trend that has been the last, um, you know, eight to ten years of a downward trend, not only for Falmouth, but all of, uh, the Cape. Uh, and so, um, we, um, good news is, in kindergarten, I will say, um, that the kindergarten numbers are actually up over the last two years, so that's actually good news for us, even though we're seeing the overall trends, um, going down, but I'm very excited that, um, we have a, a nice, solid two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, kindergarten class this year. Um, just some operational challenges, uh, you may have heard, it's, we've had it in the news, we have a big bu- bus in front of the, uh, admin building, um, we have a driver shortage, and that's not just, um, unique to Falmouth, but, um, many districts across the state, this is a nationwide problem, uh, and so, uh, for the first time, I hear in, um, a very long time in Falmouth's history, is that, uh, we actually had to redo our, um, busing routes. So we did it in the beginning of the year, and already in October, we had, we were down five drivers, and it's just nearly impossible, I mean, you just can't get people to, to cover or, um, so, uh, we've had to redo, um, the service, um, for this, it's a restart starting this Wednesday, um, because of the driver shortage. Um, the food service, we're also having, uh, difficulties, um, our kids couldn't have pizza this past Friday, which is a big deal, because we couldn't get pizza to us, um, so deliveries, the shortages of food, uh, and it's several things more than just the, um, the, uh, pizza, but, um, there's just delays and cancellations, and our food service department is working very hard to make sure that whatever we can get, we're providing those, um, nutritious meals, um, that we're committed to, um, but the shortages are real.
Okay, capital projects, uh, this year, our biggest capital project is a t-ticket roof, um, as you, yes, as you know, um, it was built in nineteen sixty-seven, and it retains the, the original roof. Uh, this November, town meeting will be asked through Article Ten to authorize a transfer of funds in support of this project. Um, as you may be aware, the, the process is a little reversed this year in that it was on the ballot in May, um, and now it's coming to town meeting in November, um, and that was because of a timeline set forth by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, we were seeking funds for them, from them in support of this project. So thankfully, in August, we received notification that we received a grant, uh, for one-point-three million dollars, um, and the estimated roof replacement cost is three-point-seven million dollars.
So, I, I told this to Patrick Murphy one time, uh, that roof actually was replaced in the nineties.
Okay, good to know. Good to know, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so the COVID grants, um, just to give you the, tell you what the acronyms stand for, C V R F is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, ESER is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Uh, the purpose of the ESER funds is to support the safe reopening and sustained safe operations of schools while meeting students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs resulting from COVID-nineteen. And as you can see, these are the funds here, ESER number three, uh, for about three-point-four million dollars is scheduled to be received this month, but has not come in yet.
Just submitted the hit button today on applying.
Okay, um, it's important to note that we will have three years, uh, fiscal years to spend on the ESER funds. Also, for clarification, um, these grants cover expenses not in our operating budget and are directly tied to COVID-nineteen. To date, grants have been used to modify our physical buildings, to accommodate spacing and the health and safety needs of students and staff. Um, additionally, funds last year were used to hire substitute teachers, um, building monitors, instructional staff and counselors, and district-wide health professionals, including a public health nurse. Um, in addition to the aforementioned positions, five, I believe I have my number correct, five ELD professionals, um, which stands for English Language Development Teachers, were hired this year to support the transition to full-time in-person learning. Um, and our commitment to communication was demonstrated that throughout August and September, the district held community forums, uh, in person and via Zoom to discuss the ESER funds and solicit feedback. Uh, the feedback from the family and the stakeholders in the community prioritize the need for staffing and social-emotional support as we continue to navigate COVID. Um, and unfortunately, it's also important to remember that these positions are temporary, so at the end of, once the ESER funds are gone, we will need to analyze our staffing needs, for sure.
Yes.
And this is, I think, the best, uh, slide of the entire presentation, because the kids are back in school, which is really all that we wanted, um, and everyone is thrilled. Um, the only modification at this point, or one of the significant most modifications is per GESSE guidelines, all students, regardless of vaccination, um, are required to wear masks and COVID.
So, um, yeah, so just, um, last year, you know, it was, um, a, a difficult year, everyone was six feet apart, sat in rows, um, and no interaction, and as you can see, um, from, we're back to, um, the good teaching and learning strategies of having kids together, um, and so, um, we're very excited about that, and the students are very excited, uh, and the students are great with the mask, it's, um, really good. So, um, as Natalie just said, um, we have a mask mandate from, uh, DESSE, uh, that was to go through October one, it was extended through November one, um, and, uh, we'll get further guidance toward the end of this month. There's a new test and stay program, and this, uh, the test and stay is meant to keep kids in school, so if, uh, as we do our contact tracing, uh, if a student is identified as being in close contact, um, they have the option of testing in school, and they can stay in school. So, uh, and that's a, a seven-day testing, five times within a seven-day period. Um, it's been very successful, we've been able to keep kids in school, we have, um, we've done lots of testing, um, to date, um, tracking the, the, the in-school positives, meaning that we actually had to do contact tracing. Uh, in our first week, we had two students, in our second week, we had thirteen, in the, uh, third week, there were six, and this past week, there were two. So we kinda built, we've come back down, um, which is good news. With staff, uh, we've had, uh, zero the first week, one staff member the second week, zero the third, and one staff member, um, in the fourth week. That resulted in, um, the quarantines, if, if the students do not have consent to do the test and stay in school, then they have to do the traditional quarantine, so, um, the total amount of students that have been home because they've elected to do that, uh, or their parents did, um, there were three in the first week, eight the, the second and the third week, and only one in the fourth week, so the majority of our students are, are staying in. There have been no staff members, um, that have elected to quarantine, so they've, uh, we've been fully staffed, even if, but they've been identified, um, as close contacts. And our vaccination rates right now, we're following, um, Falmouth, uh, High School and Lawrence, because the state has indicated that if we can meet an eighty percent benchmark of vaccinated within the schools, then the vaccinated, um, can go without mask. So those are only two that's gonna qualify because of, um, the age of the students right now. Um, so Falmouth High School right now is at sixty-eight percent, and Lawrence is at sixty, um, that is a combination of staff and students, so, um, we, we would not have met the October one date, and, uh, we continue to, um, look at the vaccination rate, the next possible opportunity is October fifteenth, and, um, so that's where we are at this point.
Great, so while the weather is nice, with the exception of today, um, the kids are spending a lot of time. So while the weather is nice, with the exception of today, the kids are spending a lot of time in our outdoor classrooms. And first and foremost, I just want to say thank you to the Outdoor Learning Committee. It was a nonprofit that saw a need, and they jumped on it and rallied the community, and we really, really appreciate their work for the district. This wonderful group of volunteers have dedicated countless hours and have raised over $100,000 for all-weather tents at the schools, and picnic tables, and seating, and other things to make the outdoor learning experience so wonderful. This is just a brief summary of the benefits of being outside, right? We're connecting kids with nature and fresh air and new experiences. And thank you again to the Rotary Club and the 300 Committee for creating virtual learning walking paths at each school. That's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Things are looking up in the schools.
Yes, they are. Thank you.
They are, absolutely.
All right. Take care. Yes.
Any questions from the board for the school committee?
That was great.
No, it was wonderful. Thank you.
It was wonderful.
Thank you for having us.
And congratulations for such an incredible opening this year.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have tabled a discussion on Falmouth Housing Trust's application for grant, funding from the housing fund for $260,000, because there was some question as to legalities raised by Planning Board Chair Charlotte Harris. Mr. Duffy, and I wonder if you might be able to comment on that? I know you didn't come here specifically for that this evening, but if you could shed any light on the restrictive covenant is the main sticking point, I believe, that the Planning Board Chair had mentioned that she felt as if, when speaking with you, that you had some concern about that covenant not being fully released.
Or anything else that we should be concerned about.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I walked in about five minutes ago, and was greeted by Peter Johnson Stabbo, the announcement that you had tabled. I'm really not prepared to go into the details of this right now. It's been months since I actually looked at that file. But I have answered some of these questions in the past, and I'd be quite happy to give you some, a report and my thoughts, if I can just find out what your questions are.
Okay. Well, the question was that Ms. Harris felt as if the covenant was not fully satisfied and released, the restrictive covenant, building only one house on the lot. But Ms. Bizinet pointed out that that covenant only required filling potholes and widening of the road, didn't even require paving.
No.
So she feels, and her attorney, two attorneys in her group have opined that the covenant was met and should be, should have been released by the planning board. So that's the one question as to whether or not you agree with the consulting attorney.
What are we talking about now?
Could you remind us?
Bernie Freeman?
Peter Freeman.
It was Laura and Peter Freeman.
All right. Laura Moynihan and Peter Freeman.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to try to summarize the other issue?
Sure. Let's ask a question. I guess, you know, we don't have control over the covenant, and that is going to be a question for some other day beyond this board. My feeling is that if we're able to, you know, appropriate the funds for the project, it's only, it's always only if the project goes forward. So if this issue with the covenant, which we cannot control, somehow is fatal to this project, then the funds aren't, am I, is that not correct? Then the funds are not spent. Is that...
I think that's probably a fair statement. If the presence of the covenant in its present state, which is not released, is going to impair their funding, that's going to stop the project. Now, I don't know the answer to that question, because that's not my decision to make.
And it's not our, that's what I guess I'm getting at. It's not our decision to make, it's not town council's decision to make. We have a decision about whether or not we feel funds should go to a project if the project can go forward. And I will just say, from my personal point of view, I think it's a good project if it can go forward. If this, if the covenant doesn't allow it to, then the funds come back, and we use them for another project for another day. I feel like we're getting too deep into the weeds of work and jurisdiction that is part of another board and other entities that aren't this board. And that is what I get worried about. You know, we're, I don't think it's right for us to try to make a decision about a covenant that we really shouldn't be weighing in on. That's just my, my feeling. We're being asked to do, I think, something very narrow, and then the other boards do what they need to do, and then the project either goes forward or it doesn't.
That was my point I made earlier. And Mr. Patterson, did you have specific questions for Mr. Duffy that you wanted to?
Yes. To what extent does 40B absolve the Falmouth Housing Trust of other obligations that might be imposed by a non-40B project?
Well, when the Board of Appeals approves a Chapter 40B project, they have a right to put conditions on the decision. I have seen this decision, but I don't remember what reference there was in there to the covenant, even if there was one. But they, they had the right to do it. Whether they did it or not, I frankly don't remember.
There was going to be appeal, too, there?
Yes, they can. And if there's a provision in a Chapter 40B decision by the Board of Appeals, which the applicant finds onerous and which causes the project to become uneconomic, they can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee.
Okay, given that and the statement made by Select Board Member Braga, English Braga, would you, would anybody like to make a motion to tentatively approve these funds pending approval and release of covenants and other issues that may hinder this project that were raised this evening?
I don't want to include the portion about, based on, it's a reimbursable application of money.
All right, then.
So we don't have to put any conditions on it.
I think we just go ahead.
It's got to be a viable project, or they, they're not going to be able to move forward, and they won't get the money, because they have to build something in order to get the money.
Okay, that's right. I was only thinking of adding it, because I thought you had a concern.
I would move the approval of the $260,000 from the Falmouth Housing Trust for three units of affordable, single-family houses at 55 Lewis Neck Road.
Second.
And I would additionally comment that the increased costs and the time value of money in waiting to get this project approved contributes to the need for the additional funds.
Voting on the amended, on their amended application. I just want to be clear that we...
Correct.
Okay.
For three houses rather than four, which was previously approved by this board.
Does that suffice, Peter?
It does. I was just going to add, for informational purposes, because we didn't get this far, I just wanted to put it on the record that the Community Preservation Committee did recommend this project as amended.
And I just want to point out, it isn't, it's not, you know, I'm not making this motion because I feel one way or the other. I frankly don't know, because we haven't delved into that issue. So I understand Planning Board's concern, but it'll be for that other conversation. So I think Planning Board will do what they need to do as they go forward.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
And sorry for keeping you waiting, Farming Falmouth, but I didn't realize you were going to be here. We're just going to consider the discussion, authorization to demolish dilapidated buildings on Andrews Farm Parcel, and we've allowed 10 minutes for this discussion. And I'd just like to start it off by saying, I have a question about the property. Do you know Mr. Johnson Stabbo, Mr. Assouso, or anyone here, how much lot coverage we have on that site that's existing? Reason for asking is, I don't want to just demolish these and then find out we don't have the pre-existing, non-conforming right to rebuild in as large a footprint as what's there. So if that is a consideration that needs to be made, I would move that the engineering department or some affiliate of Farming Falmouth would provide some type of proposed site plan, what amount of buildings would be rebuilt, so we don't lose the opportunity to rebuild on that site, which we may, if we just demolish.
So that's a question that I had not looked into. I just, there is no plan. You know, my, you know, what I just, I guess, need to make you aware of is that this board has not determined the disposition of that parcel. So we don't, we don't know what we're going to do with that parcel yet. I think, well, I can start with, town meeting did vote, as you may recall, in April of 2020, to authorize the board to lease the property. And it seems, although the board hasn't necessarily voted on it, it seems like the direction that you might be heading is to use the parcel to support future farming.
And that is where I'm going. And I did meet with Farming Falmouth representatives months ago, and with just that in mind, that, we have a letter in our packet also that supports the concept of ancillary buildings that would support the farm operation, which will be important.
Right. So, you know, a couple steps that we need to go through. One is to, if we're going to lease the property, is it going to be, is that lease going to be combined with the existing farm lease, or is it going to remain a separate, separately, you know, a lease to a separate entity, such as Farming Falmouth? If it, if it is going to be a separate entity, well, either way, there's going to be, there's going to have to be a competitive requests for proposals process. So we're sort of skipping ahead to look at any plan, because we don't know who we're going to lease it to and exactly what they're going to do with it.
Right.
But we know that the building's...
We can certainly research the question that you're raising, for sure, and we can, you know, address that issue and perhaps before, you know, we proceed with the actual demolition, come back to the board for discussion and clarification of that question. Given the long, slow timeline of town meeting, I guess I would love to see this capital funding approved, so that we don't have to wait a full year before we can begin with the demolition. As you know from the memo, Jeff Andrews, the farmer, is concerned with the vermin that are hosted by these dilapidated buildings.
Right. Well, I'm only hoping that we can maybe, if there's some requirement to file with the planning board or zoning board or whatever it is, just whatever paperwork we need to retain the right to rebuild at least the footprint that's there.
Happy to look into that. Sure.
Great. And I would be happy to support the authorization, because I, it was clear from all the paperwork I've read and all the conversations that I've had, that the demolishes, demolition is in order, and it is needed. Welcome comments from the board members, also Falmouth farming members, if they would care to speak.
No, I think, I think the folks who know it best, you know, Jeff Andrews and the folks from Farming Falmouth are in favor, so we know what these properties look like. They've been in tough shape for a long time, and I think all efforts to try to envision them being repaired, you know, that, we've kind of gone through that, and it's just not, it's just not feasible. And I think it is the issue that Jeff raises, but also there's some safety concerns, and we are the owners of this property, and we have to think about the town's liability, just in terms of having structures like this that, you know, are at a place that we invite the public to kind of come and be on this property in general, so.
Maybe it could be as simple as documenting the size of the buildings that are on the site and just making, sending a letter to perhaps a building commissioner, I don't know what, if there's a simple process for this, where we could document what's there, and maybe then later, that would give the applicant, whoever it may be, Farming Falmouth or whoever, the right to, you know, develop that to its potential.
Happy to look into that.
And so should we entertain a motion with such language?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we authorize the demolishing of the dilapidated buildings on Andrews Farm Parcel, on the Andrews Farm Parcel.
Second.
Second.
And I'd like to hear from Farming Falmouth representatives.
Good evening, members of the Select Board. Thank you so much for having us here. We are...
This is Ellie Costa.
I'm Ellie Costa. I'm Vice President of the Board of Farming Falmouth. And Patricia Gaskin.
And I'm just a member of the board. A dog's body.
Not just a member. We are appreciating your concern, and I want to just repeat what I'm hearing, so that I want to make sure I understand what I'm hearing, and that is that you want to make sure that if the buildings are demolished now, that there will be the possibility of building later, when the decision is made about who would have the lease on that land. Is that correct?
That is correct.
There's a point of clarification that I think is important here. It is our understanding that Jeff Andrews, the less C at this time, he, he has made it clear, and we agree, that the house and most of the sheds need to come down, but as a working farm, I think that Jeff has made it clear that he needs the garage for the tractors and the equipment that he has. So I believe that it's his intention that everything else would be demolished now, because if, if all were demolished, including that garage, it would be important for the town to put something up immediately, perhaps something temporary and inexpensive, but he would continue to need, he continues, as he operates the farm now, to need a garage, and we understand that, and we support that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I also wanted to make the clarification that this is listed as being demolition of buildings on the Andrews Farm Parcel, and it's actually Lot 3, as I understand it. And that differentiation is important, because the farm parcel itself is under a strict conservation order. It would be very difficult to build anything to house the tractors, for instance, on that farm, given that we know from the experience of the community garden that they could not even put in a little bit of cement to fix a pole. So I just think that perhaps at some point, for legal reasons, it might be a good idea to clarify which lot you're talking about, because there are such differences between the regs that apply to the two separate lots.
And in the town meeting article, it is clearly spelled out.
Okay.
And that would control it. That's where the funding comes from, to do the work.
The other thing that I think will be interesting to know is if, if it is possible to rebuild on that lot, do you have to comply to the same footprint? Could it be larger?
I think that's what...
It could possibly be larger. I don't know exactly the size of the lot and the amount of lot coverage that we're talking about, but there are limits.
And could it be reconfigured differently?
Sometimes on older buildings, you've already built more than what was allowed, but it was prior to zoning, or sometimes just done errantly, and then, once it's done and it's been up for seven years, it's kind of grandfathered. So we may have some pre-existing, non-conforming rights to rebuild. That's what I'm addressing when I talk to the town managers about, trying to get that established before we do the demolition, if possible.
Thank you.
I think that, I don't know if this is pertinent to the conversation at this moment in time, but another important thought is that the demolition, when it happens, should happen during a season when it's not affecting the crops that are there now, because we understand there will be a fair amount of hazardous material involved, probably asbestos, and I don't know what else. So the timing of the demolition will, when it happens, be important for the operation of the farm.
So, Mr. Patterson, would you like to amend your motion to exclude the garage and impose winter, winter hour, winter timing restrictions?
Mr. Chair, if I might? So I've communicated directly with Jeff Andrews and confirmed, you know, exactly what they said, that we do want to look at the timing of the demolition of the garage differently from the rest of the buildings. There's, there's still some sort of figuring to do. Long story short, I'd love to keep our options open. So the funding that we have requested would allow for all of the buildings to be demolished, but we will absolutely not demolish the garage without having a, you know, a satisfactory replacement plan in place, so that the needs of the farmer met. But just depending on how things move forward with the lease, and whether that garage gets fixed up or ultimately demolished and replaced, I'd love to keep our options open.
And only have to go to town meeting one time for the funds for this, instead of piecemeal.
Exactly.
And future development of the site may require the demolishing, the garage...
Exactly.
When we're ready.
Yep.
Okay.
So I would second Sam's motion.
Okay.
As written, correctly?
As revised. No, as written. I think we've got a satisfactory answer. We're not going to...
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think we have to impose winter hours. I think they'll deal with, you know, they'll work with Jeff.
Excellent point. We'll definitely make sure that that's addressed. Yep.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, and now appoint Kevin Casey as a Disabled American Veterans Representative to the Veterans Council Committee?
What did we tape?
Is there a motion? Is Mr. Casey here this evening? I don't see him.
No, but I would move approval, and we know who Kevin Casey is.
He's a longstanding member of the...
Yes, and big commitment to the veterans community, so I would move to appoint him for a term ending 6/30/2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Mr. Casey for your service and your volunteering. And next, we have Northwest Fire Station, Town Meeting, Article 12, discussion and potential vote on next steps. And I place this on because, you know, there's still questions about the combining the Northwest. We had the... We had the combined Northwest feasibility study. I don't know if anybody else saved theirs. And we also have this McGrath report from 2020, February 2020. And I'd like the board to revisit these two, and if the staff could procure copies of these again for the board, just to take a look and familiarize yourself with these, because the reason is, we're going to commit ourselves now to funding a purchase of a piece of land for another combined station. And I just want to refresh our minds, and make sure that we understand what the response time would be from that parcel. And I want to know if the board feels like, if we have enough information in these two existing studies, or if there's potentially need for further consultant analyzing of response times that the board might need to consider this. I feel like the original plan to combine North and West got a little derailed when we realized what an exposure we had in Hatchville, and I don't know if the consultant stayed focused enough on the combination when they came to the conclusion to recommend the Hatchville station. So, I'd like to entertain thoughts from the board on, the reason we're going to have this talk tonight, Chief Smith couldn't be here, but we had hoped that he would, but I didn't realize at the time when I put it on that he was going to be out of town tonight. But we are going to revisit this on the 25th of October, and we'll have an in-depth discussion about long-term planning of whether or not we want to keep West Falmouth open for now, keep North Falmouth open for now. How many people will we need to do that staffing, practically speaking? And so, we've got a couple of weeks now to brush up and think about this. I want to have this conversation here with this board prior to town meeting, so we're clear as to what direction we're headed when we get to town meeting, if that's possible. Now, I'm sorry, I kept you waiting to speak so long, isn't that Sam?
No, go ahead, Sam.
Okay.
No, my only question is, do we have a candidate site, so that we might actually have the consultant go back and look at response times? I mean, everything you're talking about is hypothetical, and until I think we actually see, you know, a particular example and evaluate it, I'm not sure we're going to be any closer to making a decision.
Well, they did give us a general area indicated, so, within that area, we could determine, we could, I don't know, Mr. Suso, do you have anything to share on that?
Well, only that, yeah, the consultant looked at 36 months' worth of actual run data.
Right.
Fire and rescue, and based upon that three years of actual runs, identified a corridor, which is essentially Route 28A, and as an appropriate target area that would best serve Northwest Falmouth in a combined fashion. And the Citizens Committee that this board appointed to look essentially at a single station also determined that they wanted to embark on looking at a potential Northwest area, and they voted similar to what the consultant recommended, which is a, the corridor of 28A for a potential Northwest station site. This board also voted a few months ago to authorize Fire Chief Smith and I to begin to look at potential properties in that same area, which Chief Smith and I have been doing. Article 12, however, would set aside funding under the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which has yet to be forthcoming. They're in the midst of reviewing this. Funding that would allow property to be optioned, and allow it to be brought back to this Select Board, and ultimately to town meeting, prior to any final determination to purchase a potential future site.
So, to clarify, this article would just give money to look at options, or provide funds for someone?
It would allow us to enter into an option, a particular parcel.
Yeah, it would actually, if he identifies a parcel that seems suitable, it would allow him to use that money to put it as a deposit or purchase and sale agreement, which could lock that property down. Once we get to that point, and we later decide, maybe, we don't need a new station Northwest combined, maybe what we have will work for us. Who knows what will be decided in the future? At that time, we'd be walking away from that $25,000.
But ultimately, town meeting, if we were to go forward with a purchase, it would be town meeting's vote.
Right.
And this particular article is actually going to be a recommendation that's made by Finance Committee, because it's a money article.
Okay. Is this the usual way that it's done, appropriating money to down payment for a place that we potentially want?
Well, each situation can be different. The real estate market has become challenging, and so, if you want to buy something now, you've got to be ready to act. So, Mr. Suso is trying to be prepared to deal in the market that we have before us today.
He only has two times a year to ask for money to do this.
Okay.
So, in other words, if he doesn't ask at this town meeting, and some piece of property comes, becomes available in January, he, there are no, there is no mechanism for him to put a down posit, a down posit, why?
A purchase and sale agreement.
I'm losing my paro speech. A deposit, a down payment, a deposit, on that piece of property. So, sometimes, this is part of why we try to use our own land to do some of this, because it makes it easier, obviously, less expensive. But, but you would have to have, this mechanism would have to take place to have those funds available.
Okay.
I think Mark has a...
We have a couple of questions in the audience. If the board is set now, we'll take some public questions and comments. Yes, who was up first? Mr. Fineran, were you waiting? I think he was.
Mr. Chairman, if I might comment, Mr. Fineran was a member of the Citizens Committee, to which I recently referred, that looked at a fire station on Sandwich Road, and also the site in the Northwest.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, which is true, and kind of in reference to what you said, we looked at this, and not in a vacuum. I mean, you might want to look at that McGrath study as not a study, but as several studies. And there's the, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I mean, there's the elephant in the room of all the overtime that we're spending keeping West Falmouth open, and I mean, the combination, combining the two stations, seemed to us to be just the most reasonable, long-term economic way out of this thing, because it would bring us back to the five-station model that we have now. And both of those buildings, West and North Falmouth, are, you know, well beyond their useful life, and I think they, myself personally, I think they'd be best turned right back to the communities. I mean, look at what the people in West Falmouth did with that library, you know? Give them, I mean, they're, those buildings are no good. And then, that corridor that we identified was identified in the McGrath study. So, the quicker we get this thing done, and my proposal is to build, if possible, build two identical stations. At our last meeting, the owner's project manager said that it would be, there's the potential of saving 30% on the second station. And I think, the quicker we get this thing done, both of them, one at a time, obviously, just the better off the town's going to be. I mean, this is a 90-year-old problem. I mean, we could solve this in a couple of years, and, you know, be done with it all.
Yep, if it really works, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neto.
Joe Neto, Precinct 9. I'm here tonight as a town meeting member. I appreciate the comment that select person Price made. I've been in town meeting over 40 years, maybe getting close to 50. We have never appropriated, by the way, it's raise and appropriate, and I don't care how small the figure is, that means it increases the tax rate. To have available, I think the figure's $25,000?
Yes.
We have never done that. I cannot support that. I cannot support setting away any money that doesn't have a clear purpose. Now, you say, yes, it's purchase and sales. Let's back this up. If anyone is going to sell the town of Falmouth land, they know it takes the town meeting vote. We have two. Town government cannot compete in this day-to-day real estate market. It's skyrocketing. That's, that's the first issue that this article brings up. You'd be setting a precedent, this board. We've never done this, to my knowledge, never. The second thing is, we need to know what this elected board wants to do with North and West Falmouth. You haven't built the station on Sandwich Road. You haven't done that. I talked to the FinCom. Another station, combined, is not in the 10-year plan. Are you really looking and studying this? And if you want to do math, tell me when does one become bigger than two?
I'm not sure.
Is one station better for the management operations of the town? Because I know two stations protect the people of West and North Falmouth. And are you going to put a price tag on response time? Is this board going to do that? This elected board?
Well, we're not determined that we are. That's why we're having this conversation.
I appreciate, I'm glad you're having the meeting on the 25th. I wholeheartedly support that, because as a town meeting member, I have to know where my elected officials stand on this. That's very important. And I'm hearing a consultant's report. Who knows better for what's good for the people of Falmouth than the people who live here?
But Joe, that's why we had a Citizens Committee that weighed in on it, and they were made up of people who care a lot about this subject matter.
I listened to a member, excuse me, I listened to a member of that committee talk about how the station's so rundown. Have you folks been in both of those stations?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. When I went there the other day, I asked the fireman, where are the deficiencies? He couldn't answer me. I don't mean to put him on the spot. It wasn't like, his one comment to me was, well, it's an 80-year-old building. And I said, well, be careful, because you're talking to a 74-year-old guy. So, let's not put age into this.
Well, we do have a list of...
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm not here to debate this tonight, but the member of the committee said, I kind of agree with. Building the Hatchville station, all for that. I supported that. I talked about it. But if you're going to close North and West and build one, that's obviously better for operations of the fire department, not the protection of the people, the citizens of the town of Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neto. Anybody else care to comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify? This is not a raise and appropriate article. This will be from Free Cash.
Okay.
So, that should be clear. We don't want to mislead people.
All right, thank you.
This is Free Cash, and the Finance Committee has the recommendation on it.
Okay, well, so, the reason we kept this on the agenda, even though Chief Smith couldn't be here, was just to give a heads up to the public, and to the board, that we will have this more in-depth discussion on the 25th, where we'll take up the article, and take up the question of, are we 100% behind this, before we ask to spend the money?
Can I just be clear on the steps of this process?
Yes.
If this was to pass, and, so now there's $25,000 to potentially put down a deposit on a piece of property.
Right.
That, then, before it goes into the PNS, would have to go to town meeting first, correct?
We'd actually come to this board first. If you authorized a warrant article, it would go to town meeting.
Later for the purchase, for the actual purchase?
Right. No purchase could be done without your authorization, Finance Committee review, and town meeting appropriation ultimately.
So, we would go to this town meeting for the $25,000, and potentially, spring town meeting, or the fall town meeting, depending on availability of land, or some other subsequent meeting. You never know, we might not find a piece of land for quite some time.
So, I guess that, my next question's going to be timing, but it really is going to depend on when land would be available, and then if town meeting was coming up, or if the warrant had already closed, all those things. So, there's no way...
Maybe you could do a special town meeting, depending on when the timing is, but...
Okay.
Mr. Suso, can you share with us, are there any parcels under consideration that might be suitable?
The only ones that would have been suitable would have required money in the past, and they've been sold.
Okay.
So, there are none that are imminently there, but, you know, following up on the suggestions of the Citizens Committee, it's still a work in progress.
Right.
What about the parcel that we just discussed in our last meeting, that we have the right of first refusal on, without knowing the location that's listed in this document?
Yeah, that's outside the general...
That's in the wrong area, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
That's very close to the existing North Falmouth station, and it's a little further from the West.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we answered the process question thoroughly. Maybe we did, but, so, it would be two separate town meeting financial appropriations, because the option to purchase just holds the land for a limited period of time, and then the full cost to buy the land would require a second town meeting vote to approve the additional money.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I just have a question and/or a comment on Mr. Neto's comment. So, when you say, when is one ever better than two, and you say, for whom is that better? The citizens of Falmouth, or for management? Are you asking about staffing? So, if you go from two to one, you go from the north and west, each having two, and you go to one northwest, what the staffing pattern would look like?
Yeah, correct. I mean, obviously, if you have two stations, you have less personnel, even with the contract that we signed, that we didn't have enough people in place the day it became effective. This is a problem that has plagued this town now since that contract was signed on July 1st. It's horrible that the people of West Falmouth do not have the same response time. I don't care if it's one, you can give me all those figures of this many runs. Would you want to live next to a fire station and see it closed? I've lived all my life in East Falmouth, and the fire station has been there. This does not affect me personally. It affects the citizens of the town of Falmouth, all of us. Because what you're doing here, and I look at it this way, when you can justify closing West Falmouth and North to combine one, it's only a matter of time till somebody says, let's do that in East Falmouth.
I don't, I have to disagree with you.
You may disagree, I'm, you may...
Because the numbers don't support them.
I know, but what happened?
And you're talking to someone who's lived in Hatchville 95% of my life, and so, I'm very sympathetic to West Falmouth, because no one's coming to, you know, AMATBY's probably coming to me first, because it's close to the Matby line. So, I get it. I get the concern.
But select person Taylor, yes.
But so...
I mean, it's the management of it.
If we were to have a Northwest station, would it be staffed with two or four firefighters/ EMTs/paramedics?
That'll depend on manpower and the decisions of the chief, so, and depending on the shift size for that particular shift. So, that is still a work in progress.
And those are the types of things that I would like Chief Smith to sort of answer for us, because I'd like to see us plan and project out. I think this is a really big decision.
It is.
And without some more of the, sort of, the planning pieces, and the potential costs, and the staffing patterns, it's, for me, it's difficult to make the decision.
Right.
There's something else at play here.
Okay.
Operationally, they could pull that truck and the staff out of either one of them, North Falmouth or West Falmouth, and there'd be nobody in there to respond to the next call if it happened to occur in the area. It's something that's constantly dynamic. So, if you could put four firefighters and two apparatus in a fire station, only half of them get pulled away, there's still half that can respond to a call that comes nearby. So, there's an operational thing here that's changing all the time, and we can't, we should be looking at the probabilities, and not at a static situation.
Well, but I'm asking the question, because I want, I want someone who knows that to answer the question.
Agreed.
And I'd like to hear that from the chief, because I hear what you're saying, Sam. I just don't have enough background in probability of firefighting and rescue service to have the data that I need.
Okay.
So...
Oh, yes, come on back up, Mr. Fineran. So, tonight, what I'd like to do is...
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry, were you still... Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Sorry, left you hanging there. Sorry, I left you hanging there.
Just some of Joe's questions. Neither of those buildings can properly house the kind of equipment that ideally they would want. Obviously, West Falmouth, that's the case, but if you can recall, Paul Broder came to us looking for money to change the front of that fire station in North Falmouth, because we had trouble fitting trucks in there. They are not ideal buildings. And the way it works now is, I mean, I don't know anywhere near as much as the chief might or even Julian, but I think between West Falmouth and North Falmouth, we have three, which is kind of an odd number, in North Falmouth, and then two when we staff West Falmouth. And as you just described it, I mean, we could do the same thing with four guys in a proper building. And also, the McGrath study only, also looked at a four-station model, which would have placed the station combining North and West right where we recommend. As I said, we didn't make this decision or recommend this in a vacuum. And to be honest with you, and no offense or whatever, but Joe's the first person that I ever heard who had any negative thoughts on the combination of the two stations. And I mean, the people in North and West Falmouth are fairly vocal, and I don't know, nor you, you don't have any problems with the combination and the zone, you're with it all the way.
But wherever we're at.
Well, I just asked.
Well, that's not true, Maury. I mean, we've had a million, a million public hearings where we invite everyone, and we haven't made a decision yet. So it's, I mean, to be fair, we have talked about this topic a lot. We made a citizens committee, we gave them, you know, big charge, a broad charge, and we have really hoped, and we didn't try to, like, exclude folks that we knew had a particular mindset. So we have talked about it, we continue to talk about it, and it's why our chair's putting it on, because it continues to be something that we care about and want to make the right decision on. So I don't think we've excluded or not asked folks.
And I'd just like to add one more point. I mean, we're talking about $25,000. You know, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, that's like three nickels. And I mean, because that money wasn't there, we potentially lost out on, you know, the purchase of, you know, a life-saving property or whatever, and something that can get this behind us. And I mean, there's economy in combining the stations, it just can't be argued. And I, as I said, the study went to a four-station model, and it chose that location. And I think this, you know, it's up to town meeting, I mean, but I think the sooner we get this thing done, and the quicker and the simpler, the better off we all will be, and we can go on to the next problem, because we have plenty.
That's for sure. Well, we just want to hear from folks in advance of the meeting, so we can all be on the same page when we get to town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interject one item, if I may, just to make certain that, particularly those listening, don't lose sight of where we are at the moment. We are working with a building committee on the Sandwich Road Fire Station, for which we've had an override passed to facilitate staffing, and we're so appreciative of that overwhelming override. And we also had town meeting vote funding to allow us to design that station. And we're on the cusp of hiring an architect to work on that building design, with the intention that in the April town meeting, we would be returning to town meeting, asking for their approval for the necessary funding to construct. Presuming that we get support for that, we would envision, with select board's approval, to be on the ballot in May of next year for a debt exclusion to build the Sandwich Road Fire Station. Now, even if that's green-lighted, we're still at a minimum, two to three years away from concluding that process, if all goes well. Two to three years from that approval point. So we're several years away from this occurring, but that is underway. It will require support from town meeting, Finance Committee, this board, and most importantly, the residents of the town, to set aside the funds to get that constructed, and we certainly hope that we're able to do that. So that is underway now, and I just wanted to emphasize that also. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So the purpose of the meeting on the 25th is going to be to really look at the long-range implications of whether or not we want to continue operating West and North, which was going to probably require more staffing, and we're going to have given an honest conversation about how many people would it really take to do all that? If that's really the desire of this board and the town, then we should face that and start planning for it. If we want to consolidate, maybe there's some savings, but let's see. Yes, sir.
Mike Zmuder, Precinct 3, town meeting member, you kind of stole my question there from Mr. Suso. If it's going to be three years out to open that station, are we already planning ahead to add additional firefighters into the budget? So in this next three years, we'll have additional firefighters in our current stations, and we'll be ready with proper staffing to open up Sandwich Road. I don't think the voters in the town are going to come back for another override.
No, I don't think so either.
For eight more people. The town will probably come back to an override to support another station, if that's the way we decide.
A debt exclusion.
Right, okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay. One thing that I think would be essential for the 25th is to, just to briefly revisit the runtimes from the general location, just to assure the public that this is what you would be getting if you go with this combined station, because there are some remedies in North Falmouth that would be a little bit increased service time, and I just want to be able to, you know, discuss that, if that's possible.
I'm not certain what we could bring forward, Mr. Chairman, other than what is in the three years of the McGrath study statistics already. And I do want to underscore that, short of adding a larger number of fire stations, you're always going to have some areas of the community. Your fire chief will tell you that, your fire command staff will tell you that, that understand how this process works. You're always going to have some areas that have longer response times than others. We can point to Wacoit, that areas of Wacoit have response times that are lengthier than we would like. Even with the new Sandwich Road Station, that is going to be the case. They have suffered with that situation for years, and this is not going to solve that problem, similar to the issues with the extreme, most extreme areas of the Northwest of the town. The very fringe areas are always going to be in a situation where they're going to have a little longer response times. The only way you change that is by adding a number of additional fire stations and staffing them all. And that is an urban setting, and we are not an urban area. But it's just a matter of funding and what town meeting wants to set aside, and ultimately the residents of Falmouth. So on specific runtimes beyond what's in the McGrath study is definitive, and it looked at 36 months, its actual data, and they plotted it using GIS coordinates, and the data is accurate and reliable, and it, to me, it's irrefutable. That can be expanded upon. We're in a pandemic now, so somebody could argue there's some potential differences, but that was three years of actual run data. That was pre-pandemic, and I think the fire chief will let him, Chief Smith, speak for himself, but I believe he'll indicate that it is very reliable going forward.
Are you asking for like a summary, like a re, sort of a review of it for the public?
Yeah, just to break it down and just say, you know, if this station were to go at Born Farm, for instance, it's going to take seven or eight or 10 minutes to get to the end of Wings Neck. Or, you know, just a general sharing of that kind of, the practical reality of...
I don't know that we could be that definitive, Mr. Chairman.
We just don't have a space, a place yet. Right?
Right, yeah.
That's the problem.
We would be using hypotheticals.
I mean, that's, yeah, it's...
Mr. Taylor, do you want to comment?
Sure. I'm Todd Taylor from West Falmouth, and I just, I wasn't going to speak tonight because I wanted to talk on the 25th, which we will do, but there's a couple of things that have come up tonight. And combining the Northwest Station into one is going to require four firefighters on duty there, if you're going to service the Northwest section of town. I think Mr. Patterson was quite clear with, if one truck call goes out to North Falmouth, you can have two guys left to go either the West, or sometimes there's simultaneous calls in the North. But if the board or the town is in the direction of combining the two stations into one and staffing with two, it's never going to work. And building the Hatchville Station is going to require more staffing. So you're going to need more firefighters, no matter what, or you're going to close fire stations. And that's, I think, what the people want to hear, are you going to close them, or you're going to keep them open, whether it's one or two? Now, that's not for me to decide, that's for you guys to decide, but if you do combine the Northwest together, you're going to have to have four firefighters there.
I've never argued that.
There's no, there's no choice, and I'm sure the Hatchville Station's going to have at least two. So I don't know if we have enough firefighters to operate all those fire stations.
And I think that's what Nancy was asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking, is that someone needs to project out for us, to say, if we combine North and West, here's what the staffing pattern would look like. When we build the Hatchville Station, here's what we're going to have here. So projected between now and whenever it's built, these are the number of firefighters we need. That's the, that's exactly what I'm talking about, is that's the kind of data I need.
With the new aid firefighters paid for, was just enough to get us to what we're doing now, including still voluntary at West Falmouth. So if we want to keep West Falmouth, there's a commitment to that. When we're ready to open Hatchville, there's a commitment to that, with that's, I would think, two firefighters. But the commitment in Northwest really won't change, because we got two in North now and two in West, and if we combine it, we still need those same four people.
You're going to have to.
This is the conversation that we're going to have on the 25th.
Mr. Suso, we mentioned the run data. I mean, the run data is what it is, but run data and response times are two different things. In my opinion, I was a firefighter for 37 years here in the town, and it's not so much how many runs you do in an area of town, it's how fast you can get there. I mean, ideally, you want to put a fire station in the middle of a section of town that can service the most amount of people in the short amount of time. It's not about run data. If one section of town has 10 runs, and one has 100, yeah, the other section of town's busy, but what do you do with the 10 runs that you don't have anybody to take care of them? You have to look at that. You can't just say, we're not going to have a fire station anymore, and you guys are going to have to wait. That's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. If you guys want to decide, that's your job, not ours. We're just trying to support the fire station to be kept there. Whether it could combine into one, that's another whole study that someone's going to have to look at that. But I think everybody in town deserves the equal amount of protection, and whether it's five stations, six stations, I don't care, as long as everybody's protected, really. We just can't exclude one section. We have protection now, on a temporary basis, and it certainly seems as though, when the Hatchville Station gets built, we don't hire any more firefighters, that's the end of the ballgame for West Falmouth.
Right.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder that we are purchasing another fire truck, so we will have a reserve fire truck within maybe six or eight months. Is that maybe...
Depends on how quickly it can be delivered. We've just placed the order earlier, within the last 30 days.
So once that does come online, then we won't have the need to be removing the truck from West Falmouth anymore, which will be a big help. Okay. Mr. Sheriff? Mr. McGann is here for COVID.
Thank you. We're all waiting.
Raise your hand if you've been sick from COVID.
You can have it.
Under hip, I share no information. So I like to come here and give you good news. Oh, let's see if it's in here. Here it is. Look at this. In yellow, you see only five, six, six, and we're halfway through the week, isn't that sweet?
The old Falmouth I know and love.
So, yeah, we had, you know, that spike for three weeks, which was starting us to think about different mitigations and stuff like that, and consider. And since then, we've had a nice drop-off, and, you know, school's been open for a few weeks, and it was a bear to figure out the test-and-stay program. You might have, you might have had some parents talk to you. Again, you're, we started warm, and then you add that into figuring out your groove and how you're going to manage this test-and-stay program, which is dictated by the state. You know, state's telling us we don't have remote on and off switching like we did last year, that we're going to do test-and-stay. And actually, I believe a lot of towns in the Cape, a few towns in the Cape haven't even gotten to that point yet, so, you know.
It's great.
Kudos to, you know, Falmouth for being able to do it, because it's a lot to figure out. There's a lot of moving parts and testing and phone calls all the way up until the nighttime to get a hold of people. So I'm very encouraged with what we've seen. Obviously, you know, I said this last week, that future performance is no indicator, past performance is no indicator of future performance.
Thank goodness, sometimes.
You know...
And I can't find any wood.
Yeah, so we'll take it, right? So it's a good sign, it's getting cooler out, people are going to be indoors. Look at it now, it was sunny out a month and a half ago. Well, it's got to come out. So, you know, those are our factors, and we have to keep watching it, and we keep doing what we do, and, you know, getting on Maven and checking the cases every morning is a routine for Cathy, my nurse, and myself, every day. We still keep doing the things that we do. And again, looking at our indicators, again, daily cases per 100,000 is that number, so that's higher than what our actual cases are. For the timeframe of up to about midweek last week was dropped eight per 100,000. So roughly, we dropped about three cases per day we were dropped off, which is good. And that number's much higher than, once you start factoring in all of last week and with this week, that should drop probably another eight or points or so like that. So I think we're definitely heading in the right direction of that. And positivity is also dropped a whole percent in one timeframe, is pretty good. So that, all that is a good sign. Hospitalization's been pretty stable, that number's a little high, I think that it is, I only get that once a week, but I have a feeling, you know, that might be a little bit lower this week. And also, that's not an additive, that's not six new people, right? So that could be the same people counted over and over again. Unfortunately, when you're in the hospital and the ICU, it's going to take a while to get out. Hopefully, everybody gets out and is okay. But so, that's where we are with that. Now, vaccination-wise, look at this, we're 81% of all eligible residents, so we clicked a percentage over this week. So we're averaging a couple hundred doses administered per week for either the first or second dose, so, which is good. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to click the slide. So here you go, here. So that shows where we're at. Down below, it's the eligible, which, out of our 31,109, 28,267 are eligible, I just basically took out the younger ones. And so you take factor that in, we're in pretty good shape. It was 235 doses that were done during the seven-day period. One of the questions that we are getting a lot is about booster eligibility. If you're, if you're immunocompromised, health conditions, you can get it, and if you had either Moderna or Pfizer, you can get a booster. No information I have yet as of today is for J&amp;J. In addition, if you had Pfizer, you can be, if it's been at least six months after your second shot, 65 and older can do it, all long-term care. People in different occupation settings, if between 18 and 64, so people that fall into that category can also get it. And then if you have different underlying medical conditions based on your age. So this comes right from the state's website. So that's just for people that have gotten Pfizer. Moderna, I think we'll get some information real soon, I'm hoping for. You should get the same brand, so if you're getting it and you had Pfizer, get Pfizer, if you had Moderna, get Moderna. And we're waiting for what's going to happen with Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, like, we pull this off the state, so it even tells you the time. If you were done in December of 2021, your eligible is of June, that'll be your six months. They gave it to you in the right-hand corner. So, you know, for an update, I mean, we're looking better than, close out of this. And so we're looking better, definitely, and we'll take, you know, whatever we can take, and we've had a good, you know, two, two and a half weeks, and schools have gotten their groove, and, you know, as information changes on boosters, we'll put it out there. There's other things between five and 12-year-olds that we're hoping maybe by mid, maybe sometime in November, and we'll be able to run school-based clinics for that. That's, you know, captive audience, yeah, we can run school-based clinics. We've already ran, already run three school-based clinics, one May, June, one in August, and one just recently last week. But we only had a dozen or so people uptake on the last one. So we're kind of waning on, you know, bang for the buck, you're not getting a lot of people come out, it's, you know, sending nurses down to do it and stuff like that. But as it introduced the five to 12s, I'm sure that some of the pediatricians will be doing it as well, but, you know, we'll be able to do school-based program as needed. Booster shots right now, I think, going back to boosters, the one thing you want to consider right now, pharmacies still have availability. I've checked it every so often, and it looks like there's plenty of appointments. So at this point in time, Barstow County, we're not going to be setting up big mass clinics, because if you can easily get it there, setting up clinics and having people sort of standing around for 30 doses when you have 13 people running a clinic, doesn't make sense. The need comes, and we can click that switch and just go ahead and do it. So I think that's kind of where we are, and any questions?
Just got a, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you asked a question.
All right, so... All right, so, um, now I realize that the, uh, after a hundred and twenty days, the Pfizer is only seventy-seven percent effective, or last time I read it, that was what they said. But the Moderna was holding at about ninety-three percent effective. And I guess that's by the number of breakthrough cases. How do they keep track of that?
They do.
And, uh, so now it's making me think I'd rather have the, the Moderna. I had the Pfizer and then I got, uh, exposed. But it's just not a possibility. Is there any?
Well, I wouldn't say it's not a po, I mean, that's the guidance, right? So that's what we're telling you, we want you to get the same shot.
I heard today that they're looking at the, I just.
They are looking at it and.
Yeah, they just don't know yet.
Again, one of the reasons why Pfizer isn't working as good as Moderna is the twenty-one versus the twenty-eight days. Maybe a year from now, we realize we should have been forty-five. Like, that was the perfect number. The UK was, you got your first dose, they went through everybody, and then it was months before you got your second one. Maybe they'll find out, which is a great easy, you look at UK's numbers of, of breakthrough and United States breakthrough numbers, and if the UK's look better, they might come up with a different number eventually, right? So that might be part of the reason why. I think, but I'm not, again, this is getting beyond my scope. I don't know how to, this, the little, all that sort of detail works, but, you know, perhaps, they're probably very similar, you know, other than maybe some of the other ingredients that are in there. But right now, the guidance is to stay with the same dose. So I wouldn't advise anything else unless that changes. I'm not, you know, going to try to overthink, you know, what we're getting from the CDC or the FDA for that matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Sam?
Question for you. Um, is there any difference between people's terminology when they say the third shot versus the booster?
I prefer to use third dose, but everybody's sort of jumped to booster. It's the, right now, it's the same dose. I mean, it may not be the same for, like, we haven't heard much from Johnson. You may, I don't know what they're going to do. So I prefer third dose. So we know that Pfizer's the same one, right? And Moderna right now would be the same one. Um, so I would use the term third dose because booster sometimes has a connotation that it's something special or something different, right? So it's just that it's the same, same stuff.
Non-COVID, but related because we're entering to the season. Flu shots. Everybody should be getting their flu shot, just like last year.
Yeah, flu, yeah, flu, I mean, last year, you know, the wearing the mask and having things closed obviously left, less, lot, lot less flu, right? We're not quite as closed and we're not quite as masked, so flu will probably creep up in case numbers. And we'll be running flu clinics like we, we do. And you'll see we have to get your flu doses. I'm working on some clinics and probably later this month, um, we'll run a clinic, you know, and, um, definitely get your flu shot. I mean, I wouldn't, why would we not recommend it any different way we would any given year that you should also get your flu shot? So.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Oh, one last question.
Yeah, sure.
When are we going to stop seeing you here?
It's entirely up to you guys.
Never.
It's winding down.
And if the Brady, if the Brady.
We love seeing Scott.
If the Brady game yesterday was tonight, I wouldn't be here tonight. How about that? No, just kidding.
Well.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Sooner or later, your, your extra nights will come to an end. Okay, next we have vote article recommendations for November twenty-twenty-one town meeting.
Before we get really into it, I just have a, a question. Why some things say selectmen, why some things say board of selectmen, and why some things say select board?
It's because the language is provided by the petitioners and sometimes they don't remember that we changed our name to select board. That's really the reason. And we can't change their language until it gets amended, if it does, on town meeting floor.
Okay, I'm looking at this actual document that has all the dates on it. Says, "Selectmen Vote Articles and Execute Warrant." I'm just noticing in general, there's just a pattern of inconsistency and I just, I'm curious of.
It's true that it's just been selectmen so long, people still sometimes make mistakes and.
Yeah, it's an old template.
Yeah, and this is coming from us, though, however. So we can change that.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, um, article, are we starting with fifteen or are we going to go through the whole article, the whole warrant? These are just our recommendations.
Only the ones we have to vote on. Our recommendations on.
Yep.
Those are listed on one of the handouts so you can see, um, which ones are FinCom, which ones are Planning Board, and others are Select Board.
If you go right on this one.
Yeah.
Right. It'll give us.
Well, Peter.
Yeah. So we start with the fifteen, yeah, he provides us the chief.
We already know that we're starting.
But not, not for all of them.
So we really don't need to talk about all of them tonight. So, Article fifteen, "To see if the town will vote to increase the local room excise tax described in General Law Chapter sixty-four G, Section three A, from five percent to six percent, and to determine the effective date of such increase, or to do or take any other action on this matter on request of the Board of Selectmen." And the draft proposal recommendation is that the town vote Article fifteen is printed with an effective date of July first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
And the explanation, which we're going to discuss whether or not we like the explanation, is if approved, this article is expected to generate more than three hundred thousand dollars per year in new revenue, which the Select Board proposes to appropriate to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to subsidize the creation of new deed-restricted affordable housing. A town meeting vote will be required to appropriate these new revenues into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund each year. This is one of two new recurring revenue sources the Select Board is proposing at this annual town meeting at the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Committee. It's becoming more and more challenging for year-round residents to find housing in Falmouth and in the region generally. This shortage of housing poses a threat to local businesses and the very fabric of our community. It will take a substantial investment and over many years to address this issue in a meaningful way. The most desirable affordable housing developments, those for which more than twenty-five percent of the units are affordable, require town funding. As such, it's essential to maintain a balance of uncommitted funds for potential future projects so that nonprofit and for-profit developers are incentivized to initiate the multi-year planning process required to fund, permit, and construct affordable housing. Based on recent experience, we expect to leverage three to four million, uh, three to four dollars in state, uh, state and private funding for every dollar the town funds expended. So questions and comments on the language of the explanation from the board?
I want to say that, uh, these were dra, drafted by Peter, I believe. And Peter, Julian, um, Jennifer and I sat down and went over Articles fifteen and sixteen explanations last week. And I think they did a really, really good job of writing those, so I.
I agree.
I agree with that. One question and concern I have is, if approved, this article is expected to generate more than three hundred thousand per year in new revenue, which the Select Board proposes to appropriate to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. I personally feel like we really should be looking at the amount of revenue from the short-term rentals and consider that as new revenue, not just this one percent. I suspect it's closer to half the revenue, but I really don't know what the number is yet. So I'm hoping that we don't find ourselves bound to this three hundred thousand dollar number.
I don't think we are with this language. I think it's just saying we expected.
Nothing that binds you at all.
Yeah, I think it's just trying to give an idea. The way I read it is, it's just trying to give a ballpark for town meeting members to say, like, what kind of number are we looking at? Is it going to be like a drop in the bucket or is it going to be this enormous amount?
Does this end up back here? Do you have your?
I have mine, it's right here. I've just written on it.
Draft explanations?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, Peter, I guess I did have the next one stuck together here.
That's quite all right.
Okay, so, um.
I move that the town vote Article fifteen is printed with an effective date of July first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I assume this is because this is the start of a new fiscal year.
That's correct.
And then Article sixteen, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter sixty-four G, Section three D, and impose a community impact fee of not more than three percent of the total rent upon each transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed unit located within the town or due to taking any other action on this matter on request of the Select Board." And I'd like to suggest that that language about professionally managed unit should be removed and maybe we'll have to make an amended motion. Because some people own only one and do have it professionally managed.
So these, this is confusing wording that is from the state. Um, but professionally managed is a defined term under the statute? And it explicitly means adopting this article as written would only apply, as the explanation says, for those who own more than one unit. Is that, is, were you?
That was a cha, that's a concern I had, yes.
Oh, is that you would like it to apply to those who own only one unit?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
I felt like it implied that the professionally managed was going to be the people that have a property manager are now going to have to do it themselves. So I didn't want people to get the idea that that was the intent.
No, uh, and that's, so we're, you know, Frank drafted the article, again, based on the statutory language.
Okay.
And certainly, if there's a need to sharpen up the explanation, we can do that. But that is what this article does. It, whether, and, so it, it's limited to those who own more than one property in the town of Falmouth. And.
With short-term rental.
With short-term rental.
Right.
This is just a short-term rental tax. Or a community impact fee on short-term rental.
So you can own as many properties as you want, but if you have more than one on a short-term rental basis, then you're going to have to pay this extra three percent that is going to be considered.
That's correct.
And I see that it references Mass General Law sixty-four G, which has, I'm assuming, all those definitions of how you determine a short-term rental.
Yeah, right, and the definitions get pretty detailed and you have to go to multiple places to actually get the full picture.
All right, so let's read the explanation now, so the public can hear it. "This is the second new recurring revenue source the Select Board is proposing at the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Committee. Per statute, this fee is imposed only on owners who operate more than one short-term rental unit in Falmouth and is not imposed on owners who rent just one unit in a short-term basis. As defined in State Law Chapter MGL sixty-four G, short-term rentals include houses and apartments that are not hotels or motels that are rented out for no more than thirty-one consecutive days. These, this includes properties rented through intermediary, intermediaries such as Airbnb and VRBO. See Mass General Law sixty-four G for a full description of applicability. This fee is collected by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and dispersed to the town on a quarterly basis in the same manner as room excise taxes. If approved, this article is expected to generate more than three hundred thousand dollars per year in new revenue. The Select Board proposes to appropriate all the community impact fee receipts to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to subsidize the creation of deed-restricted affordable housing. Town meeting vote will be required to appropriate these new revenues into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund each year." Sounds like a very good explanation to me.
I would move that the town vote Article sixteen as printed with an effective date of July one, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second? There's many seconds.
All seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. Article eighteen, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for a special act to remove all personnel from the Falmouth Police Department from the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty-one, Section one, at s, what is it called?
Secutor, like, and all the, from the after that.
The Civil Service Law, or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the Select Board."
Do you want me to read this section for you?
Sure.
I'll need to give you a break.
Agreed.
Um, so I'll just go quickly through the explanation for the public. "The Falmouth Police Department has an acute challenge with respect to filling vacant positions. Removing the police department from the state civil service will remove unnecessary delays in the exam and recruitment process and afford the town greater local control over hiring, promotion, and discipline. This change has been negotiated with the three police unions. The civil service hiring process adopted by Falmouth in nineteen thirty-six is administered by a state agency that is chronically understaffed. The exams that individuals must take to be hired as a patrol officer or promoted to supervisory position are offered only once every two years. There is then a delay of several months to get the results. Recently, there have not been enough qualified candidates available on the civil service list to fill existing vacancies which has left vacant, uh, excuse me, which has left vacancies unfilled for over a year in some cases. Many Massachusetts communities have removed their police department from civil service. The town has consulted with ten towns that exited civil service since twenty fifteen and all report that the change has been positive. Other towns include Brewster, Harwich, Mashpee, and Yarmouth were never in civil service systems. These communities that are not part of the civil service system are able to offer exams as often as they need. They are qualified, uh, there are qualified professional firms that administer exams which meet all state and federal requirements and are able to provide the test results within days instead of months. Non-civil service police departments are able to fill positions more quickly. The town has negotiated promotion and discipline policies that will replace civil service and ensure that the process is impartial and affords due process to the officers. It is imperative that we take prompt action to minimize hiring delays which compromise the ability of the police department to protect public safety and place an undue burden on Falmouth police officers when they are required to work overtime shifts to meet minimum staffing requirements. There are, of course, other factors in the region and the nation which have caused a decline in applications for police officer vacancies. Removal from civil service is no silver, silver bullet, but it affords the town greater flexibility to meet the challenges which are beyond local control. If this article is approved, the Select Board will then petition the state legislature to approve special legislation to complete the exit from state civil service."
Thank you.
Uh, I would move approval.
Second.
As printed.
Should be, should we clarify when it's, the last paragraph, it starts off, "It is imperative that we take prompt action." Are we talking about prompt action in the hiring process or take prompt action at town meeting?
I think take prompt action to get out of civil service.
To improve the hiring, yeah.
Yeah.
That, okay.
Because we, there's not much that the chief can do until he exits, until we exit civil service. He can't offer the test on his own or.
Okay, that's what I was getting from it, so I want to make sure that was the intent.
Not sure if we should leave the silver bullet in there.
I know, the wording is a little.
Oh, yeah.
It's stuck in his little fog.
Yeah.
Um, it may not be a panacea or something.
Panacea.
Uh, leaving in the silver bullet is a little.
Thank you.
Off-putting.
Is that a Coors Light?
Yeah.
And what do you want it to change it to?
She said is no panacea.
No panacea.
Yeah, no panacea. I think that's great. With that, I would recommend it.
Good catch.
Good second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article nineteen, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board with the concurrence of the Conservation Commission to lease and provide for the management of the Peterson Farm property or any part thereof for a term of not more than twenty years, upon subterms and conditions as the Select Board deems prudent and proper, or to do or take any other action on this matter on request of the Select Board with Conservation Commission."
Would you like me to read this, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Explanation, "Town presently leases this farm property to individuals who are now raising sheep, pigs, and turkeys on the property. State procurement law limits the length of such a land lease to three years unless town meeting votes to authorize a longer lease, subject to a competitive request for proposal process. A longer lease allows a tenant to make long-term investments which are needed to ensure the financial viability of the farm. For example, the tenant could qualify for a grant to purchase a tractor if the farmer had a longer lease. Approval of this article will allow the town to enter leases up to twenty years, Approval of this article will allow the town to enter leases up to 20 years, including renewals and improve the prospects for farming to be financially viable at the property in the future. And the recommendation is that the town vote Article 19 as printed.
I'll second that.
I just want to disclose that I have volunteered at that farm during the construction, and I think they're really qualified to continue this, and 20 years seems reasonable to expect. They're very...I mean, they're young enough to do it, and they have a lot of good friends that come and volunteer to help them fix things up and build fences and whatnot, so...
And I think whoever gets it, it's just because it will go out back for an RFP, but it's the same as Tony Andrews' farm when we had this, or Andrews' farm, when we had this conversation. No farmer is going to step in and make the type of investment if it's a three-year lease. It's just not feasible, especially with the margins being so narrow in farming, so I think this is a way to have this property remain just, you know, a beautiful piece of property that is such a benefit to the town. And I agree, the current lessies have made enormous improvements, and so we obviously want to encourage that with whoever gets the...whether it's them or whomever else gets the lease in the future.
And the improvements that really benefit the general public.
Whole property, yeah.
Not just the property, but the public as well.
Agree.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a motion?
Yep.
Yes.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 20, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 272, Section 73A, for the removal of gravestones and other memorials for repair or reproduction in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Massachusetts Secretary of State by community-sponsored, educationally-oriented, and professionally-directed repair teams, or do or take any other action on the matter on request of the Select Board. The recommendation is that the town vote Article as printed, and the explanation is...
Do you want me to read the explanation?
That'd be great.
Okay. This section of Winthrop Drive is next.
Oh, no.
Am I on the wrong one?
Falmouth Historical Commission.
I bumped one down. The Falmouth Historical Commission has proposed that the town develop a plan to repair and restore gravestones at the old burying grounds on Mill Road. Under Massachusetts General Law, removal of gravestones and other memorials is generally prohibited, but town acceptance of this provision of the general laws authorizes such removal for the express purposes of community-sponsored repair or reproduction.
I would move that town vote, the article is printed, I think it's long overdue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just suggest it says that the town vote article, it's missing Article 20.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. So next, Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept the doings of the Select Board in laying out of Winthrop Drive, East Side, from Seacoast Shore Boulevard to Edgewater Drive East at a distance of 726 feet and width of 40 feet according to plans on file with the town clerk for taking as a public way under the Betterman Act, or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the Select Board.
Now, I'll read this one.
Sure.
Since I jumped ahead before. This section of Winthrop Drive is next on the list of private ways for which the town has received a completed application for acceptance as a public way. The estimated cost to pave this dirt road and bring it up to town's standards is $265,000, which represents a cost of approximately $15,600 per a butter. The many procedural steps required by statute prior to town meeting action have now been completed. If approved by town meeting, DPW will oversee the required roadway improvements, and this section of Winthrop Drive will then be accepted as a public way. There is no direct cost to the town associated with the improvements.
I move that the town vote Article 21 as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and maintain, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164 of the General Laws and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for all purposes allowable under the Commonwealth, including, without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and related services, or take any action relative heretofore on petition of Falmouth Net Incorporated. Recommendation is not filled in, but the explanation is as follows.
Would you like me to read it for you?
Certainly.
Okay. This is a petition article sponsored by Falmouth Net, which is a private nonprofit which seeks to facilitate the construction of a fiber-optic network to provide fast, reliable, and affordable internet access. Approval of this article begins a multi-step process required to establish a, quote, "municipal light plant," which is a legal entity separate from the town of Falmouth, authorized under state law to operate utilities including internet service, cable TV, electricity, and natural gas. The municipal light plant is governed either by the Select Board or an elected municipal light board of three to five members, who then appoint a, quote, "manager of municipal lighting," who has full charge of the operation and management of the plant pursuant to Section 56 of Chapter 164. Establishment of a municipal light plant requires a two-thirds vote taken by ballot at each of two town meetings per Section 34 of Chapter 164.
And we do have the president of Falmouth Net, if there's any questions specifically, and he may...might want to comment. I did get a note from him earlier that he wants to make sure that we make it clear to the public that these other ancillary uses that are mentioned are, I think, just required by state law to explain how the...you know, how the process works, but the practical application in Falmouth would be just for broadband service and the management thereof. No other gas or electricity is proposed or under consideration, and if it were to be, then it would have to come back for another vote. And Megan, go ahead.
I have a question for Frank. Can you just explain to us, Frank, if we recommend this and town meeting votes it, could you explain sort of our level of obligation? I understand it's a multi-tiered process, so I just want to understand, how locked in are we to this trajectory? So in other words, obviously, you know, what I'm saying is, say we vote this, and then we realize this is just not going to work, town of Falmouth isn't going to buy in and make the investment, or a third party isn't going to come in and make the investment into, you know, fiber in the town. Are we still locked in in any way to go forward with this process?
Well, just to clarify, this particular statute requires two town meeting votes at two consecutive town meetings, both by a two-thirds majority and both by ballot, which is essentially a secret ballot, which the moderator has been apprised of, and he will be able to run it. It does not obligate the town to go forward with this project. This simply is authorization to do it. Now, I assume, although I am not privy to the management of the Falmouth Net, but if it succeeds at the first town meeting, they're probably going to undertake some studies to determine the feasibility of this and do other due diligence so that they'll be ready if it does pass, and they'll probably come to you with a program for your support, but it doesn't obligate you to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, town meeting voted it, I think it was 1934 or '36?
They did, they voted it in the mid-1930s, and of course, at that time, it was strictly electric light, because there was no other utilities. But I took a look at it, and I determined that it was a stale vote, because you really can't rely on an 80-year-old vote to go forward with this kind of a project today, especially since the purpose is entirely different.
Right.
It's interesting that it was created but never acted upon.
Right.
So it survived two town meeting votes, but then, for some reason, it was never used, so...
I just noticed that, I don't know if we can edit the explanation, because it's on petition of Falmouth Net, but there's a couple typos in the explanation.
We can, it's your explanation, so welcome, welcome those edits.
Okay, there's an A before Falmouth Net in the first line, so that should not be there, and then on the third line, access is spelled it correctly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Eisenberg, did you have any other concerns that we haven't addressed? If you do, you got to...if you do, you got to come up to the...
You have to speak at the mic.
I'm David Eisenberg, I'm the clerk of Falmouth Net. I concur with Mr. Duffy that this first vote obligates the town to nothing, it's just good planning. In addition to this first vote, we are also, we've...we're in the process of contracting an engineering design, which will take us from our feasibility study, which was funded by the EDIC in 2019, and it will take us from there up to the threshold of construction, shall we say. We expect that'll be done around January. In addition, there's the infrastructure bills going through Congress. We don't know, but if there's money available from them or from current federal funds that are being administered by the state, if we have...if we're on the verge of a second vote in April or November of 2022, then that will make Falmouth look more attractive to these granting agencies. So the possibility...so what we're proposing with this first vote is merely good planning, and it would...they make it deliberately difficult to establish a municipal light plant. You need two, two-thirds votes and two town meetings within 13 months. So...so by initiating the process now, we're simply doing good planning, so when things converge in 2022, Falmouth will be potentially ready. And of course, any further action, the second vote, or appropriating money, or a bond issue, or whatever has to happen, that comes before town meeting. The municipal light plant is not totally independent of the town.
Okay, thank you.
So it would mean a lot if the Select Board would vote a favorable recommendation in this first vote.
Okay, thank you.
Obligate us to nothing, thank you.
So the recommendation from the Select Board is not yet filled in? Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, let me say that setting up a municipal light plant is like setting up the EDIC. It doesn't say that the town has to fund it. They would then, under Massachusetts Law, actually be able to raise funds on their own, so they could let bonds go, you know? Of course, it's the lenders that are going to want to vet the projects to make sure that it looks like there's a business plan that's going to pay off. But it separately...it essentially allows a separate governmental entity to exist at a level that we decide, right? So all this is going to have to get determined at some point, but the point I want to make is it doesn't commit the town to actually supporting this venture with money in the future.
Okay, that sounds like it's pretty close to making a motion there.
Well, I definitely would move that we recommend this...
Article as printed?
As printed. The only question I have is that the actual article wording says municipal lighting plant, which is not part of the Massachusetts regulations, and so...
May I speak for that?
Sure.
Sure.
I...we...there was some back and forth with Sam and Art and me earlier, and I did a little homework, and it turns out that there are a wide variety of names that all fall under Chapter 164, and you have Taunton calls its MLP a municipal lighting plant. Municipal light plant is the letter of the law, for sure, but Belmont calls themselves a municipal light department, Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, Boylston Municipal Light Department, Department is pretty regular in here, there's a Danvers Electric Division, et cetera, et cetera. The exception is the rule, actually, in terms of actual formal naming of this thing, but it all falls under Chapter 164.
Okay.
Well... Mr. Chair? Yes. Could I just suggest if the...I think it would be helpful if it, in fact, is the board's intent to pursue only internet, and I don't know how you feel about cable TV, but clearly not electricity and gas. I think it would be nice to spell that out in the explanation. I wasn't sure, so I just, in my initial draft, I just, you know, the law allows all of it, but if that's not the board's intent...
I think it would clarify for town meeting members and voters to understand that.
I agree.
Agreed.
So cable...so internet service and cable television?
Internet service and potentially cable, because we really aren't targeting cable.
If we just do internet service, you can get to the TV.
Through that.
You have adequate bandwidth.
I agree, I think we need to keep it really clear what this is proposing.
May I?
One more time.
Falmouth Net would be perfectly happy if it were just internet.
Into the mic, David, I'm sorry, your...
Yes.
Our audience.
Falmouth Net would be perfectly happy if it was just simply internet access service. That, from there, we could...these days, you can get television, telephone, all that stuff, but what Falmouth Net is proposing is internet access service only.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
So should we clarify and say internet access service instead of just internet service?
Yes, I would add access.
And strike everything else.
And, yep, period.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and that is to recommendation that the Select Board vote Article 22 as printed.
Correct.
Article 23, to see if the town will request the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, in the interest of public safety as allowed by the provisions of General Laws Chapter 90, Section 18, and in the interest of public health as allowed by the provisions of General Law Chapter 111, Section 31, and 122, to develop a bylaw on the use of town-owned roads bordering on residential zones by commercial vehicles from the hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Such bylaw is intended to provide relief to residential neighborhoods that are plagued with early morning truck traffic and establish quiet hours in those neighborhoods. The town will develop a quiet hours bylaw based on sound impact data with a completion date of July 1, 2022, on petition of the Southeast Massachusetts Regional Transportation Citizens Task Force. And Mr. Duffy, this was the one that we were hoping to hear from you on your opinion of the viability of this article and the recommendation to this board as to the legality of our vote.
Or, and to the town's authority to do this.
Quick question, do we have sound impact data at all, or they're suggesting that we do that in addition?
I think they're suggesting that we compile it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any experience with drafting such a bylaw, but I would suggest it would be kind of a task that probably the town manager would have to appoint some kind of a task force to come up with a bylaw that would meet the requirements of this article if town meeting votes it. First of all, we'd have to involve the planning board to determine where all of the town-owned roads bordering on residential zones are located and see what impacts that would have, because as you're going down the street, sometimes you go from district to district to district, and they're not all continuous. The sound impact data, I don't know where that would come from, it may require a study, but certainly that would have to be done. Another thing I would do would perhaps be seek the input from the police department, the Department of Public Works, perhaps the fire rescue department, any other town department that would be impacted by this. Certainly, we would have public hearings to see how the public felt about it, because it would impact them, depending on where they lived. And finally, I think what I would do would be to seek from other cities and towns models for somebody who has done this before. So I personally would be getting into something that's new, and I think the community would too, but if the community, if town meeting wants to pass it, we undertake it.
It would be the beginning of a process.
It would be the end...it'd be the beginning of a process, and I don't know if July 1, 2022 is a reasonable completion date, but I have no idea.
Okay.
Could you speak to how does...so obviously, this is generated mostly around Woods Hole and the Steamship Authority, I mean, that's the, you know, really the piece that this is connected to most, not that there aren't issues with noise in other places, but...so what is our authority, if the town were to actually have a bylaw, what is our authority to enforce that when it is a state road? I'm just wondering, in practical terms, if what we're really looking at is the issue with the Steamship Authority going down Woods Hole Road, does this address that?
Well, I think one of the problems we have is that it talks about town-owned roads bordering on residential zones. Now, a town-owned road, to me, is a public...is a town way, not a state highway. It's been pretty clear from the research that we have done that we cannot impose restrictions on the traffic on state highways. Now, as...again, we'd have to really take a look at a map and see what we're talking about here. Now, this is a general bylaw, they're talking about a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so a zoning bylaw has to be standard throughout the town, has to be the same everywhere, but a non-zoning bylaw doesn't have to be, it can be specific to a particular location. But you're right, I don't believe we can regulate traffic on state highways for a local bylaw.
My question is, it just seems like there's a lot of hoops to jump through for this particular article. As you said, we'd have to have some town, you know, public hearings, that's fine, we do the data, I don't know where we get, you know, we have to appropriate some funds for that, but then at the end of the day, if we craft this bylaw, and all this time and energy and ultimately some funds go into it, if it can't be enforced to address the concern, and it's a very real concern that these folks have, have we gone through all of this and for nothing?
Well, we have a member, a bylaw in a town must be approved by the Attorney General, so one of the things I would try and find out is if they've approved a similar one in any other community. If they haven't, we'll certainly let you know. And then, the police department would be undoubtedly charged with enforcing this bylaw, so we'd have to determine what kind of problems it would create for them. And again, bring that to your information, and let town meeting know too, if there's one draft.
One more legal question, if I could. Would you say, in your opinion, that ancillary roads serving Steamship Authority by their nature would be considered under the same type of jurisdiction as the state highway leading to them?
Well, that's an interesting question, I've actually kind of looked at it, I don't know that I have a definitive opinion on it, but, for example, you have the state highway ending at that bridge, and then the rest of the road is a town-owned road, and at the end of it is a pier operated by a state agency. So it might be very difficult to take that last couple hundred feet and try and regulate traffic there in a way that would impair...
You're not going to be able to do that. You know the state's going to go against that.
So I think that could be problematic, although I'm not telling you definitively.
It just seems a shame to develop such political ill will with our neighbors across the pond if we're not ultimately pursuing something that would be successful and effective anyway.
If you don't allow certain commercial vehicles to pass through certain roads from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and you restrict that, do you have to offer them any... 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and you restrict that, do you have to offer them any sort of alternative route? Or do you just say, you can't do it?
Well, in this particular case, I think you'd say you can't do it, because there's no alternative routes unless you want to send them down Sippuwissett Road. Which I don't think anybody wants to do.
But that was my question. If you want to avoid that road, you go.
Well, that's, that would probably fall into the same quiet zone. And if we're gonna establish this, it's townwide.
I'm, I'm also curious on what is the definition of a commercial vehicle?
Probably anything over 10,000 pounds. Yeah. I think it's 10 now.
Probably defined by the type of plate it has.
Which would prohibit me from traveling.
Yeah, we're just saying, you know, all panel trucks.
Well, that's what I was wondering is I.
And pickup trucks.
Yeah, if they're a certain weight, you know?
I, I mean, I, I understand this, I, I get it. I absolutely understand the need. I think we've just had a brief conversation. We've, we've come up with a dozen different unknowns and potential pitfalls. I, I think it's something that we need more information on before we could make a recommendation. So I would be recommending indefinite postponement, because I don't think we have the answers. And then, perhaps we could ask town council at some point to, if Frank is able to look and see other communities, if they have enacted something like this, and how that, you know, if they've enacted something like this, where they have a similar situation of a state road running straight through the section that's most concerning, and how that might work.
I don't think.
I second her recommendation.
I'd be very surprised if you were to find a comparable community that has this in place, but I'd be interested to know.
But that tells us something.
Right.
If we, if they don't, there's, there may be reasons why, right? Because it, it may not be, it may be very hard for this to take place. And maybe there are other ways we can, you know?
And I certainly understand the petitioner's motivation for this. You know, we've sent letters for, I think, three years now, asking the Steamship Authority to discontinue the 530 vote. Our transportation committee has proposed many alternative options that the Steamship Authority could or should possibly consider, and they just now, this week, voted to continue with the 530 vote for the 2022 season. And what's unfortunate is our recent letter from June was just now read into the record in September. For consideration by the board, sort of at the last minute, and again, was not successful. So I was hoping for a better outcome in October, and I certainly sympathize with the petitioner's ear. Well, what's the other thoughts from other board members on the indefinite postponement suggestion?
I seconded it.
I think Megan made a motion, and Sam seconded it, indefinite postponement.
Let's hear the, what's the vote? All in favor of the indefinite postponement recommendation due to?
Aye.
Aye.
Legal complications.
We just need more information.
Yeah.
I think we need more information.
I would also, I would like to see some sort of sound study. I mean, we, we know that it's loud, but some sort of sound study, I think, would really enhance this article. Or anything else that we try to do?
What, you know, our town council has given us a number of, of issues that need to be kind of defined. I think the explanation really should include a list of those, you know, just to say.
Yeah, I agree. So that you can point to what, some future work that could be done.
Exactly.
And is there an option?
Foundation that could be built, essentially.
Is there an option at town meeting for, town meeting to direct town council or staff to pursue these? Or can we vote to pursue this information?
We can just ask him through Julian to get us whatever the, you know, list of three things that, you know, we need some clarity on. But I think what, what Sam is saying is really good, is, is that we, in the explanation, highlight the concerns Frank has raised that we don't have answers to. So that it's, number one, it's memorialized somewhere, and it points out that there is more work to be done by either the town or the petitioners. Some of these things are, you know, Falmouth Net is a good example. Part of how they have brought their, their vision is to talk about other communities where some of these actions have taken place. I don't know that we have that here from this, from this group. And that's always helpful, because we need to know how, the NIPS group did the same thing. You know, they're telling us other places that have done it, that it's worked.
Precedents.
I also think that, I understand that we're, we're addressing something with the Steamship Authority, but it isn't just in Woods Hole.
No, it's true.
There are other areas of town, by the admin building.
28, yep.
28. So I, I just think we don't want to lose sight of East Falmouth Tea Ticket when we're, we're thinking about something.
And we also have to think in terms of, we're not only affecting the Steamship Authority, we're affecting construction delivery.
Right. Businesses, businesses.
Construction workers that want to get to their job sites by the time, time to start at 7:00 o'clock or whatever.
Crack pickup.
So, Mr. Suso, can you take that kind of guidance and say, maybe work with Attorney Duffy to try to clarify what next steps would be for this group, so that at town meeting there can be an explanation as to why we indefinitely postponed it?
We were gonna put that into the explanation.
Okay, if you have that ready to go before the printing, that'd be good.
Explanation of the board's action.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter and I can work on that with Frank, certainly.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks, Frank.
Hopefully, that'll be helpful. If they want to revisit this in the spring, they'll maybe be a little more prepared.
You know, we are also responsible for Articles 26 through 32.
Yep.
And I don't see why we can't recommend them as printed.
I agree. And then the recommend, then explanations are drafted between staff and the chair of CRC.
Dr. Clark, did you come to make any comments regarding that?
I did. To answer questions, I had explanations. We've, we've written them. I just didn't realize they were expected. I, in fact, I got an email from Diane saying, could I have them by the 20th of October? I can read them to you if you want the explanation.
We've read them. No, we've read them, and you guys have already done that work. So that's why I think, I think it's appropriate, it's most appropriate for you to work with town staff to just.
Include them in the.
Maybe rework some of them.
Fine.
If necessary.
Happy to do that. Yep.
Well, that's down through 31. And then, we have the one for the.
Should we, should we vote on 26 to 31 first?
26 through 31, sure. I move that we recommend Articles 26 through 31 as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
32 is a little bit different, and I'm not quite sure the history of how that has ended up in our lap.
Well, the feeling with the petitioner was that the discussion at the previous town meeting was pretty short, and the only people who spoke were in opposition. And he feels like it was a fair request to revisit it at town meeting, to make sure it gets a full discussion and a full vetting and a full understanding of town meeting members.
And they've also, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They've also hosted a site visit for people to physically see it. I think that was also an addition since the last town meeting.
No, it's just really the transfer of the authority from the school committee to the select board, essentially, to the town.
Guess that's the crux of it.
Yeah, that's the crux of it. And so this school committee's put all these conditions on it, but it's really the transfer of the authority that was the question I had. And it sounds like maybe we're the only municipal authority that can actually extend a lease to somebody.
That's correct. Right.
So that's why, that's the reason.
That's why it has to come back.
So that needs to come in, get into the explanation.
Okay, right.
So with that, I would move that we recommend Article 32 as printed.
And do we want to talk about the explanation at all?
I think what Sam has said, just explaining why it has to happen if town meeting decides to vote it that way, what it means. Do we have an explanation from last town meeting, right?
Uh, yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. So, I mean, can we just?
It was a petition article again, I just.
It wasn't. It was the board of select, it was the select board.
Oh, it was the select board article. Okay. So we have an explanation.
So we have the explanation. So if we could just reuse it, and if it needs to be updated.
And at the bottom, we could maybe add that the original discussion maybe could have been a little bit longer and get a better sense of understanding for town meeting before the, the vote was taken.
More thorough deliberation.
More thorough deliberation, exactly.
So I moved it. Did it get a second?
A second.
Oh, you seconded it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Four to one.
That's it for articles, right?
Yes, it is.
And then, now we have minutes.
Interim, nope, interim wind turbine first.
Oh, that's right. Interim wind turbine report. Where are we at with that, Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I included in the board's packet the interim wind turbine report, and I can quickly go through that for those who would be listening. As the board's aware, you voted to have the wind turbine disposition process proceed, and the following items have been underway. The town has engaged outside special counsel Chris Marog, who has been before the board already, to assist in overseeing challenging contract and procurement issues. The contract has been executed with consultant Weston and Sampson in furtherance of pursuing the disposition of the wind turbines. Several meetings have been held with the consultant, including walking the turbine, turbine site, reviewing multiple details and related items to document the bid specifications required. A licensed asbestos inspector has visited the site to sign off on draft specifications. Updated draft specifications were received in mid-August, draft bid, pardon me, bid specifications were received in mid-August. Further necessary bid changes were transmitted to the consultant. We have confirmed a previously unrevealed interconnection agreement with EverSource that was executed over a decade ago by personnel no longer with the town. We are cautiously reviewing this early agreement with legal counsel to avoid unforeseen and potentially costly electrical problems at the wastewater plant. We understand that in order to once again resume responsibility for the wastewater plant electrical grid, as was the case pre-wind turbine, EverSource must now prepare a design for the town to upgrade and possibly adjust some portion of this electrical grid. Prior to this bidding, we'll be interfacing once again with the Clean Water Trust to review the process we are putting in place, as we will be requesting their sign off in an attempt to limit the town's total financial liability to the funds the town meeting has already appropriated. I anticipate an expanded status report and discussion with the board later in October or following the upcoming November town meeting, and that is the interim report.
And I just got a question. Has the Clean Water Trust been more responsive recently than in the past? Because we were having trouble getting definitive answers from them in the past.
Well, the response that we have from the Clean Water Trust is to bring a proposed package to them. And so as soon as we have that, we do want to sit down consistent with, and prior to issuing that bid, as I've noted, and negotiate with them.
Okay.
And I am guardedly optimistic, but that lies ahead.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you very much.
Okay. And now, individual, oh, meeting minutes.
Yeah, meeting minutes. We've got two.
I noticed something on page eight of the first minutes.
Oh, I've got, yeah. I've got edits too.
Is that regarding shoring rather than?
Yeah, but that's one of mine.
Okay. Go, go ahead.
All right, let me start with the earlier page. This is the, these are the minutes of Monday, August 30th. And on page two, under licenses, B, it says, Mr. Patterson, Jush.
What'd you do?
Miss Patterson, special.
Oh, miss.
I think my name should be eliminated from that. Something tells me that there was an SP for special, and somebody did a cut and paste, or copy and paste, and put my name in there instead of the S. So for B, it should be special one-day wine and malt liquor license. And then also on C, again, it should be special one-day wine and malt liquor license. So those should be edited to eliminate my, the name, my reference. Okay, a typo on page three, under F. If you read through the second paragraph, Carla Feroni, housing coordinator, going down to the third line, it says, has gone thorough, should be through, so just get rid of the O there. No, that's just a.
And she, and this would be.
This would be to collaborate.
Well, I guess that's actually okay.
Okay. All right, and then on four, from, from this page on, in vote, recording the vote, if you look at the, at G, just the line above, it says, Ms. English Braga, motion approval, second Dr. Taylor.
Which page have we got?
This is page four, excuse me. Four, the line just above G.
Okay.
Ms. English Braga, motion approval, second Dr. Taylor, all I. Now, we don't normally do that. We usually record individual votes. And, and if you look, the rest of the minutes are all have that word.
All I.
All I. And I have no problem doing a, a cut and paste, which records all of us, our votes as being I, but I think this is sort of setting a precedent to abbreviate that motion, and I don't know why it was started, because it's the first time I've ever seen this. So I would suggest that we do a copy or a cut and paste of all I and put the appropriate vote in there. And then, I think Doug, you correct, way down on the bottom where it said, just several lines above three where it says, Jennifer Mullins said it is part of the capital facility plan. It is part of the debt drop-off, and then it goes on, asking for funding $20,000, $20 million dollars for upgrades to wastewater treatment plant, $60 million for.
Sewering.
I assume it's collection system.
I think, I think she meant to say sewer-ing, but wastewater collection.
Yep, sewer-ing works.
System.
So that needs to be changed.
Be more accurate.
And then, on page nine, in the second, in the second full, or the first full paragraph, but, second line, housing coordinator attends the Affordable Housing Committee.
Oh, yes.
Not on it. That's right.
Not on it.
Okay.
So that's, and those were the corrections that I spotted. Does that cover everybody else's?
Yeah.
Well, with those edits, I would move approval of the meeting minutes of Monday, August 30th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Twenty-seventh, I didn't quite finish reading it. Did anybody finish reading it?
I did.
We just got it today.
And these are pretty clean. I, I, I found them to be quite clean.
I hadn't read anything.
I would move approval and release for public access. I guess I should have said the public access on the last ones as well.
That's okay, well.
That's automatic.
Yeah, I think, because it's a, it's your open, it's your public session.
Yeah, it's not.
So I think it's automatic.
Is everyone comfortable with approving the minutes of the 27th as well?
I thought they looked, looked good. Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, for approval and release.
I think I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I think I need to abstain. I wasn't there on the 27th.
Okay. So four approved, one abstained. Okay, individual select board members' reports. Anybody have anything to report?
I, I do want to report, because of the last meeting, how long it went, I, I don't think I could have been coherent, but I did attend the, the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority Board meeting, advisory board meeting, let me give proper names. And I wanted to mention that there has been a project that they've been on, actually, I guess you'd say, trying out, in the Hyannis and Yarmouth area. And it's, it's a DART system, that's Dial-A-Ride Transit, but it's done on a call-in, kind of like Lyft or Uber. Where you can call in and, and get a ride within, you know, an hour's time. Previously, you had to call in the day before and schedule a ride. And it's been very.
Which is impractical for a day-to-day life.
For a lot of people, it's not. I mean, if you're scheduling a trip to the grocery store, or to a doctor, or pharmacy, that works. And I've driven them for three years, that went way back. And I've driven them for three years, that went way back, and they work for a lot of people, and there were, there were even, even health services trips, they were called, or transportation. And I want to talk about that in a second. But at any rate, this is a much more interactive program, and can be done online, and the, the beta test, if you will, has worked very well, and they're looking at Falmouth in the next phase. So I think this is really a great attribute that the RTA has taken on, and we can look to benefiting from that as well in, in the future. And it would probably, you know, probably be Falmouth mash bean sandwich to add to their, their territory. So I wanted to mention that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, which is a concern, and it has to do with the special trips, what they call health, health services, transportation, these are people on dialysis, that go to the dialysis centers, you know, to have their blood cleaned of the toxins that their kidneys can't remove. It includes methadone treatment for people who are being treated for drug abuse. It includes trips up to the Boston hospitals. The state, for whatever reason, I guess for financial reasons, decided to take the administration of that program away from the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority and put it in the hands of the Greater.
Boston?
No, it's Taunton, what's the?
South Coast.
Attleboro, the Greater Attleboro Regional Transit Authority.
Hmm.
Now, to run those programs, you kind of have to know the territory, which our dispatchers here, you know, on Cape Cod, didn't understand that. And they could make variations in trips, or maybe if a person was delayed for some reason, a medical reason, they could come back and collect them later, you know. There were so many modifications that they could make because they understood the nature, they understood the clients because they're repeat customers over and over. Well, suddenly, they're going to put that in Attleboro. And Tom Care, the director of the CCRTA, is quite concerned about it, and, but so far the appeals to the state-level agency have fallen on deaf ears. But, you know, I think we're reaching out to our, our legislative delegation and trying to get them to intercede, to at least postpone starting this, because I think they were talking about starting it in the next fiscal year. And that does not really give a lot of time to really readjust and for people to get used to the fact that they're going to get a different kind of service. I just wanted to mention that.
Should we have an agenda item for the next meeting to?
I think it would be an excellent idea.
Discuss perhaps sending a letter to legislators, including?
I think that'd be a great idea.
Senator Moran, who is on some sort of transportation committee?
Yeah, and, and I think that if we could get Tom Care to come in and talk to us about those changes that the state's proposing.
Okay.
I think it would be a good idea, and extend, you know, invitation to Dylan Fernandez and to.
Sue Moran.
Sue Moran and David Vera.
Yeah.
To maybe come and sit in on it.
Or send a letter of their position if they can't attend.
Exactly, but anyway, that's a concern, because we have quite a few systems, I can tell you personally, having picked, picked up people from Falmouth to use those services, it is really a valuable service, and it's affordable, you know, rather than their own, you know, using a.
We don't have, we don't have a public transportation system that's an option otherwise.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. Suso, can we?
That's it for my report.
Yeah, thank you.
I did, did enjoy attending that, one-hundredth anniversary of the police department here in Falmouth, and well-deserved, and a nice occasion for sure.
It was very nice. Nancy?
So I just have a couple of things. I had a tour through the Cape Verdean Museum, and that was really amazing. And I was glad that, that Dr. Door brought that up.
Is this the Emerald House?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I did that too.
It was really awesome.
It is special.
It really is. And select board member Angelique Scott Price and I got a tour of the Eddie Marks House, I'm not sure if you mentioned that last time at the last meeting, but I wasn't here, so that was also enlightening. And then my last comment is the police department and their one-hundredth anniversary, and we talked about that at the beginning of the meeting, but I thought it was important to note that while we were there honoring people who had intervened, honoring officers who had intervened in the community with people who were experiencing some mental health issues, while we were there doing that.
So that's swearing in.
And we were leaving.
At the swearing in, not the anniversary.
I'm sorry, yes, at the honoring of the, you're right, of the officers.
Doctrine action.
And, exactly, and swearing in nuance. That they had another call as we were all in the parking lot talking, and so it got me thinking about sort of clinical support for our police department, and thinking long-range and planning for our police department. It just was interesting to me that we were, you know, there, really supporting the work they were doing, and at the same time, they got a call and had to send.
And they go out and do the same exact kind of work.
Same kind of work. You know, it was, it was a mental health crisis, and it was just, I just thought, wow. So in thinking, you know, sort of planning forward, I was just thinking about clinical support for our police department and how we could make that happen.
Yep.
So we're trying to think of, Nancy's trying to think of ways to incentivize the additional education that officers might take to help with these mental health issues as they arise. They can't all become psychiatrists, but, you know, every little bit of training could be helpful.
No, but, but, you know, this ties back to the civil service issue, because it, you know, if we allow some flexibility for our chief as he thinks about hires to look at individuals, and it's their, it's their personality, it's their level of interest, I mean, you know, we have, and Mike Semenow, somebody who has been really dedicated to reaching out to folks with mental health issues and making that a huge part of what he does, and has, has taken that on and really, I think, made deep connections in the, in the community with folks who are dealing with mental health and with substance use disorder. And I think, you know, coming out of civil service gives a little bit more flexibility for there to be some of that evaluation of candidates to, to see, you know, do they have some more of those characteristics that might lend themselves to an individual who is motivated, who's interested in doing some of that? And if you're able to structure some incentives or build into it some other supports to get officers that training, you know, I think that's wonderful. But allowing our chief to have more discretion in hiring, I think, is a first start, rather than being just stuck with lists that don't give him any ability to kind of look beyond, you know, who's put in front of him. You can see people within our own community who may have that affinity for really being dedicated, again, you know, you often get that with people who have come from this community, somebody, you know, Mike is from this community, there's a lot of family members here, and I think that, that is no small reason why he really cares a lot and has taken on such an important role. So I, I think these things are also connected, goes back to that civil service question.
And I agree in terms of, and they've had training, they've had a lot of training around substance use and mental health. I'm just wondering if at some point, we're going to need to support them with real clinical support, which would mean having some sort of a clinician working with the police department.
More than what human services can do.
When, exactly, and when they go out to a call, how much can we really, and, and they've done it, and they've done it really well, and it also takes three people, as they described. So it's just something to be thinking about, and as we look towards that department and public safety, public safety has changed.
You're going to reach out to the chief?
And we need to change with it, absolutely.
Good.
I have spoken to the chief about this many times, and he would like to have a full-time clinician on staff, is something that he's said to me before. So I think having a conversation with him about how we could support that, potentially putting that into a budget, if we get out of civil service, we might have more flexibility with that as well.
But even if it's not a full-time clinician, I mean, the school department, you know, has Dr. Parkinson as an advisor for medical issues, you know, that they can reach out to, but just have somebody on a retainer, so that when the, you know, when the need is there, you could connect those people together properly, so.
And just to, I mean, a shout out to Suzie Huttman and her staff, I mean, they have, there, there is collaboration, and they have, but they obviously have a ton on their plate
Right.
that needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
You know, beyond the really constant needs, I mean, policing is, you know, policing and, and the courts are really the front line for, for mental health and for substance use, and those things are often comorbid, and, and it is just the reality of it, and we don't have resources in place for folks to get help before you get to the level where the police have to intervene. So, you know, it's been raised to us before as something to think about, and I, I think it definitely bears investigation.
It's never really been addressed fully since the closing of the Bacassett Mental Health Facility, where a lot of people were just said, hey, see you later, good luck. And, you know, they're out there sort of on their own now, when they used to be under supervision and, and receiving help. And that was a big failure, I think, in the part of the state to stop funding that program.
Well, and I, I think the time is now, I think we've, we've maybe pushed it, you know, kicked it down the, the road a little bit, but with, with all that they're managing with substance use, abuse, and mental health, and, you know, I think we want to really take a closer look at that sooner rather than later.
Certainly agree. So my report today is just, is anybody else?
I just, really quick, can we find out if there's any possibility of using some ARPA funds towards something like that because of the impact that COVID, I mean, the stats are all there, the impact that COVID has had on, I mean, overdoses has increased, mental health issues have increased.
It's a good idea.
So I don't know if the ARPA, if there's anything there that can assist, but could we take a look at that maybe?
We'll take a look.
Thanks.
Good one. I did attend a Zoom conference from the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail about their initial plans to do the first, I don't know if it's a mile or so, it's a small portion of the, the section, but it's the first thing that they're going to do. And all indications were that so far, the considerations are to continue to have rail with trail, so if we want to have our consideration of any rail to Falmouth, I don't think it's totally precluded. We're going to have another conversation tomorrow with representatives from that group, and is it one person from Bourne that's going to attend?
Can.
Yeah, so we'll probably learn more tomorrow about that.
I know, in early discussions about that, there were some questions about whether Joint Base Cape Cod won't insist upon having that rail connection to move heavy equipment.
So one of the new ideas, I won't get too far down the road, but one of the new ideas is, is a potential option that does not impact, you know, so, so using a spur that doesn't impact them as much. So there is some discussion about whether or not there's some kind of a third or fourth, I guess, really, fourth way.
They may access the base through a different area than Falmouth.
I saw such an option laid out, but, I mean, that's a considerable investment.
Yeah, and also.
When they already have something in place, I mean, you know, so, and, but anyway.
And I've been in conversation with the Bourne select here, Judith Froman, about, let's maybe talk about the creative ideas of using elevated walkways with helical piles adjacent to the train, because there's a couple of pinch points that are problematic, so I'm hoping to keep that conversation going to, I'd like to see the rail be able to stay an option and yet continue the bike path, so.
This country, this country really has squandered the opportunity for really high-speed rail transportation. You go to Europe, and you get on the, the high-speed trains, I mean, it's incredible how fast you can move from city to city.
Yeah.
And it's electric, you know, so they're, you know, yes, they're generating power somewhere, it could be by fossil fuels, but it's, it's impressive, and it is so smooth, it's, you hardly, you can't believe that you're actually flying along.
Yeah.
At, at ninety to a hundred miles an hour.
Right, well, we're probably not going to have that on the case, but we would, even if we had any rail, if you could go to North Falmouth and hop on a train to go to Boston, I would love to do that.
Absolutely.
Take a taxi out there. Let them do the driving, ride the bike, I could walk to it.
Yes.
All right, any other comments from the board, we'll have Mr. Suso's report.
Thank you, just a brief update that was in my report, but I do want to mention it, on the board's continued interest in the proposed Scranton, Maine senior project, the zoning board of appeals has completed their first hearing on the project, and their process is well underway, we are guardedly optimistic as all moves forward on a challenging timetable. By statute, as the board is aware, this ultimate timetable is fully under the control of the zoning board of appeals, so we'll continue to work closely with them in any manner which we can support that important process. As noted, I was pleased to also attend the one-hundredth anniversary celebration this past Saturday, great event, and the board's next meeting is Monday, October twenty-fifth. Thank you.
And with that, I entertain an emotion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.